All right, it says we're streaming live.
Okay, hang on one second. Okay, you're ready to go.
All right, it's 6:32 on October 27th, calling to order the October 27 meeting of the South Row Board of Selectmen, and in a couple of minutes, we'll let our Capitol Committee also call their meeting to order. I'm going to read Governor Baker's Declaration for these meetings, and then we can get the Capitol folks in here. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the South Row Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of South Row's website at www.southrowtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner by finding the meeting at www.southrowtown.com/remotemeetings. Now, in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on South Row's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. And that declaration will go for both our meeting and for the meeting of the Capitol Committee. And with that, I think we can bring in the members of the Capitol Committee.
Is that everyone, Jason, or are you waiting for anyone else?
Looks like Kathy just-
Oh, there she is, okay.
Sorry, Vanessa, I think Andrew, oh, you've got him in there, sorry.
And Jason, while they're, while they're getting connected, just to let you know, for the, for Baker's Declaration, I covered both the Board of Selectmen and your committee. So you don't, you don't have to, you don't have to read those nine sentences or whatever it is.
I appreciate it. Are you, are you ready for us to go, Marty?
Yeah, you have everybody?
Yep, and I will just acknowledge that all members of the Capitol Planning Committee are present. I do see them on the screen, but I still see them as attendees. So I guess when we get to the end, Vanessa, if there are any questions you'll control, or any comments they want to add, after I'm done, you'll be allowed to-
Yep, they have the ability to talk at this point, just not to share their own screen.
Okay, perfect. So what I will do is share my screen. Can everyone see my screen?
Right. I can.
Yep.
Yep, got it.
All right, so thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. This is hopefully starting what I would call a new era of this version of the Capitol Planning Committee. I know one existed many years ago of how we plan to approach capital requests in future years and try to be out ahead of some of these items as, and allow the proper vetting by both D O S and advisory very early in the budget season before you get in the heat of the true operational budgets. I'm joined here by all members of our committee tonight, and I guess this goes without saying, but given that this is a new format that we are presenting to you in tonight, when we get to the end, you know, we would welcome feedback on, you know, ways that we could do it differently in the future or validation on the approach. This slide I kept in here from a prior presentation I made to you back in August, not to remind you of who you appointed, but to remind you of our request from back in August of, of the last thing on the list in terms of the open seat. We candidly haven't seen any advertisement by the town trying to find some sort of engineering expertise to join us. As you're going to see, we're about to embark on a pretty ambitious road from a capital perspective down the road, both, you know, in FY '22 and for the many years to come. I would say we are more than adequately covered on the financial side at this point, given the membership, but it would be great to get someone with construction, engineering, or architectural background to balance out our committee going forward. So I would ask that this board, given that you are the appointing authority of our committee, continue to solicit members of public. We're happy to do it, we're just not the appointing body. So if there is something we can be doing to do that, please let us know. I'm not going to rehash where we've been since March, but I figured I do is rehash what we've done in the last two months to get us to this point. So since that point, we have facilitated with the great assistance of John Parent, a formal application for both the townhouse windows and all exterior renovation projects that were envisioned over the next five years into one bundled project to get the economies of scale that we expect should be realized by doing all of that at the same time, that was bundled into an application to CPC, and we expect that they will hear that shortly. We've also facilitated the presentation that obviously your board heard from Mr. Butler, our committee heard, but also the advisory committee heard on the solid waste disposal. I don't want to rehash all of the details that was in Mr. Butler's presentation. I think all of you have heard it many times at this point, but what I think is the really important takeaway from that is by doing that analysis, it put us in a much better spot to deal with capital requests in FY '22 and '23. And given if we had gone down the path that was in the capital plan we inherited, we would have needlessly have spent money on engineering studies likely, but also on capital improvements that just did not, you know, seem to pass muster and, you know, will help us for many years to come from a bonding perspective. As you know, we formed the School Research Subcommittee that consists of Ms. Cook and myself, as well as Ms. Martin from the school committee. That committee's work is well underway, and I will touch on some of the aspects of that as we go through the presentation. We've also set up the Capital Module in ClearGov. We were a little late to the party, but, so it wasn't ClearGov with having a Capital Module, but we expect that's going to go live here very soon. There's just some tweaks that we'd like to make to get it consistent with the format that the committee has come used to in terms of reviewing both short and long-term requests. And really, the main reason we're before you is we've now reviewed and voted on all FY '22 capital items. We looked at it from three perspectives, approving what was already in there for FY '22, deciding what needed to be deferred, and we'll go through any reasons why items were deferred. And I also took a look ahead to say what really should be accelerated and may not have been in the right year. In terms of the process we undertook, it goes, I think it's really important that we, I don't even remember how many motions we took on this, but anyone that watched that meeting will know, we took item by item, department by department. Every single one, you know, while there was good discussion, has the unanimous support of the six members you hear, you see here tonight. In terms of our process, is we, we've met with department heads many times, you know, throughout this, but to get to tonight, we notified the department heads of two things. One, if they had an item that was up for consideration, they were invited to join us. And even if they didn't have an item that was up for consideration, we asked to make sure we had the right population because what we didn't want to do is get through all this with you and then have a department head say, "Oh yeah, by the way, I forgot, this should really be in FY '22." So we feel like we've made the proper reach outs, we've had the right discussions, and if you don't see a department listed here in the presentation tonight, it's because they didn't have any capital needs to bring forward tonight, or for the fiscal year '22. What I'm not going to cover is certain department heads did choose to defer items because they just weren't ready or not needed at this point. Here's a simple example, there was a roof anticipated for this year on the DPW garage. Well, Karen Galligan had the roofing company come out and look at the roof, and they said it's good for at least another three to five years. So she didn't even bring it forward for this year. So we're not going to go through all the items that department heads took off, because we don't think that that's warranted. They did enough due diligence on their own to take it off, the committee voted to take it off. What we are going to do, though, is walk through any modifications that we, the Capitol Committee, made that may not have been proposed by a department head originally. And again, those are going to be very few and far between, but we have gotten consensus with that department head about where we're at. You'll notice in the, in the forthcoming slides, we also have a yes/no on bonding. That should be considered what I'd call a temporary placeholder, but it goes into some of the funding recommendations in how at least we've captured the current year cost. Of course, this can be adjusted going forward, but the important thing to remember with this is we've actually bonded probably less than could be bonded. So if you end up in a situation where you think that these capital items are required still, and you voted to approve them, but we get to close to town meeting and there's a budgetary crisis, you do have a lever to still pull with regards to bonding to spread some of these out. Ultimately, all those decisions obviously come back to our town treasurer, given, you know, the responsibilities he has, but, you know, what we've done is assumed a cash expenditure for a lot of these, and these are the numbers that Brian is at least carrying in the preliminary budgets that will start to come forward with both capital and operating combined together. I think, you know, we could have put 10 years out here, we could have gone back, we could have gone forward, but I thought it was easiest to just compare these two years in terms of what was approved by town meeting last year in FY '21 and what is coming in FY '22. And it's not only important to understand what town meeting will vote on, but it's also important to continue to understand what town meeting has previously voted on that we are still paying for in terms of bonds. And if you'll notice, the debt service is remarkably constant within about 100K from year to year, but if you look at the appropriation, and this is only on the general fund, we will touch on other funds as we go through the presentation, we are anticipating almost doubling the amount coming out of the general fund with these items that we're bringing forward for current year spend. Now, approximately 25% to 30% of that is largely driven by items that never came before the annual town meeting last year in the interest of streamlining those discussions. They were punted to the fall town meeting, and as you recall, obviously, I was in your meeting in August at the same time you were making a decision of whether to hold a fall town meeting, and this was one of the items we talked about. So we are doing a little bit of catch-up in FY '22 for items that candidly should have been voted on in FY '21, but given the circumstances, there just was no way to advance them. It's all, so when I talk about thinking about what we've previously authorized, this is kind of a breakout of the projects that we're funding in FY '22 with previously authorized town meeting expenditures. You'll notice we're now bearing the full burden of the public safety building, and this is one, going to be one of the largest years that we see for that building. So if you remember, some of the items that were bonded were temporary in nature in prior years, and also some of the items that were bonded, were bonded over shorter lives, three- or five-year type, time periods. So we're seeing the brunt of those principal payments in these, these recent years. The other one that, the other two, I guess, that I would point out to you is 9/11 Field. This came as a surprise to many of our members as we went through this, in terms of the amount of debt that's being serviced by the general fund. This will flip in future years based on our understanding as the user fees repay it. So in future years, we actually may see a negative here, but $122,000 for FY '22 is no small sum of money, and it is adding to our debt burden as a town in a year where obviously things will certainly be uncertain. So one of the things we did talk about as a committee and have no control over is, you know, what are we charging appropriate user fees on that today, and what are the user fees? So would ask that the board continue to think about that to see if we can't knock that number down a little bit more and cover some more of the debt with user fees in the coming year. It may not be possible, given the startup and shutdown of recreational-type activities over the past six months, but certainly worth exploring. And you'll see the other large component of the debt are these school-related projects. These will actually fall off the debt roll in a couple of years, but I think it's really important to note, there's an offsetting amount on the revenue side of this, right, with the SBAB payments that come from the state regarding to this. So it, this is roughly a zero-sum gain once you factor in the revenue to offset it. So I think one of the common misconceptions that that's always out there is, oh, the school debt's going to fall off, so we'll have the ability to absorb more capital. You're also going to lose a revenue source, so it's, it's going to be a different, different line of thinking. And I think the way that SBAB is doing their projects now, you won't see this 20-year tail. I think it's all funded upfront, if my understanding is correct. When you break down the amount to be spent in FY '22, I spent a little bit of time on the 1.533. We also believe there are projects that are potential for CPA funding. Obviously, community preservation has to vote to bring those forward to town meeting, and ultimately town meeting has to fund them. There's also funds coming out of the ambulance fund and funds coming out of the water fund. So before, actually, before I go on, Mr. Healy, maybe a comment for you in just terms of process. We are going to go through a bunch of slides, as you have all seen in your packet, about department by department. I was planning to just pause on each of the, like, at each of the points at the end of each department, allow any of your members to ask questions, and then you have the option to bring in the department head if they're in the audience, so then we can kind of move on as opposed to having to come back and, and shift through slides. Does that work for you?
It works for me. I can't imagine that, yeah, I see heads nodding, so that makes a lot of sense. Are all department heads here, as far as you know, or the ones that have capital items? Do we have?
I'm just looking at the purchase, I'm trying to pull up the participant list on my other screen.
Not many here.
You have the Fire Chief, IT Director, that's it.
Facilities.
And facilities, sorry, John.
Yeah, okay. Just so we know.
They were all notified that we recommended their attendance.
Yeah, my guess is, I mean, I, I've, I've watched a decent number of your meetings, you know, fast-forwarding in hand, and have, you know, seen the interaction about these. I suspect a lot of other members of the board have. So I, I'm hoping that if someone isn't here, that there aren't any lingering questions, but we'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Okay, so I'll move on to DPW then. So there are a bunch of items here, mainly vehicle in nature, chipper, trailer, hook lift truck. This is really the same truck, it's just split between funding sources, which is why you see it on two different lines. A pickup diesel, this is actually two vehicles, as you can see, it's a 2008 and a 2012. A utility diesel for the water fund, three plows, there's more coming next year, and the annual road maintenance allotment, and a new sidewalk maintenance allotment. There was very little conversation at Capitol about these, other than as follows. The committee thought the hook lift truck should have gone in FY '21, not FY '22. So we really think that's an important one to make sure we get through ASAP whenever we are able to meet from a town meeting perspective. But also, we spent a lot of time talking about what our role should be on the road maintenance and the sidewalk maintenance moving forward. There is little to no dissent on the need for each of these. The question on sidewalk is, is it enough? But we tried to take a middle road for now, but also thinking through whether these are capital expenditures in the future, or whether they're just separate articles that, you know, have the ability to potentially roll year to year. We're still thinking in, in talking about that, and we think naturally that question will be answered down the road through some sort of capital policy, which we'll talk about at the end of the meeting. But that was really the level of discussion around DPW, and I will touch on one deferred item at the end of the meeting.
Okay, Jason, so you're, you're, you are ready then to move off this page?
Correct.
Okay. I am fine with this, with these items. I'm, I agree, I saw your discussion about sidewalk maintenance. I mean, it's an interesting, it's an interesting discussion. I don't think it's anything we have to decide now, but, so I don't have anything about these items. Does anyone, Ms. Brashow? Oh, you, God, you're on the committee.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm not going to comment or anything on this, so you can just bypass me, and that's fine. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Malinowski?
I'm good on this slide, thank you.
Mr. Shea?
I am good on this slide, thank you.
And Mr. Stivers?
I do have a question. I listened, Jason, to most of your meetings, I think. I listened to a conversation about leasing equipment instead of buying equipment. Are any things in here strong candidates, like the hook lift truck, for example, to lease or potentially buying used equipment that still has a lot of life left in it to mitigate some of the cost of buying new equipment here? Is that something that is potentially likely, or there are good reasons why we shouldn't consider that at all?
So there is ongoing conversation. I think that's one of the levers we, you know, we need to continue to look at, right, and whether we want to spread some of these payments out over the year, or just, you know, can we bundle them together? The hook lift is a candidate to either lease or to bond, given the size, it's over 200K. Some of these pickups and utilities, my understanding is Karen doesn't go out and buy new ones, which kind of makes sense when you, when you look at some of these numbers. What she does is she repairs the body. So she keeps the, the cab where the people sit and the engine, but she replaces kind of the back, back portion of it. So that was my understanding from her, at least when I had some discussions with her about those. So I don't think she's going out and buying all new vehicles in this one, but obviously, we do have some members that are very interested in the leasing concept, but you also have to weigh that against some of the bond rates that Brian's been able to get more recently. And bonding and/or leasing certainly is beneficial from spreading of payments out, but we're just literally kicking the can down the road on some of these things, and we may get to a point where we just don't have the capacity to undertake additional capital because we have so much debt service that, that's, you know, taking up the overall appropriation.
Just an interesting topic to keep on the agenda.
Yes, for sure.
Thank you.
I don't think the committee will allow me to do anything other than that to keep it on the agenda, so.
Andrew won't, I'm sure.
Yeah, I was going to say, does Andrew agree with your statements here, Jason?
Yes, I agree.
All right.
You have the lease documents ready, Andrew, for signature.
I think we're all set then, Jason, next page.
Okay, so go to facilities. Four items here. We've already touched on the largest one. The library renovations, this is a holdover from last year. So when you kind of start adding up the bucket of holdovers from FY '21, this was one of the items that was pulled very, very late in the budgetary process, not because of need, but looking at the town's financial condition and uncertainty around COVID. We continue to believe it is a worthwhile project and one that we stood behind. The townhouse bathroom and interior renovations, what you don't see on this page, but is important to note, is this number has shrunk about half from when we inherited the plan, not because of any of the work we did, but more because Mr. Parent kind of looked at what his team and the capabilities that we already have through salaries on the books, and this is really going to fund more materials and some external labor. But, you know, the original budget had anticipated about going out to bid and getting a general contractor in there. We actually have people on staff that are skilled to do a lot of this stuff now, is my understanding. So they were able to knock this number down quite a bit, which I think is important also, as you consider operational budgets down the road. This is the large one, the exterior renovation and window work. If we took the sum of the parts, it would be a much bigger number, but this is a good number. We have an engineering study behind it. We are seeking to have it, it's obviously going to be bonded, no matter what source it comes from, but we are assuming that the community preservation committee will actually bring it forward to town meeting as a fully funded article. It does have the support of the historical commission at this point as well, which I think is an important step that we were able to help facilitate with Mr. Parent. Should the funding mechanism change, or CPC not choose to bring it forward, I think we're going to have to have a joint meeting with you, advisory and CPC to figure it out. But for now, we're going to hope, you know, that that application process runs a course and is beneficial, but obviously, the general fund likely can't absorb that total amount next year if we were not successful in getting community preservation funding for it.
Hey, Jason, you guys have done a nice job, you know, targeting CPA funding. Is there a rationale? Did you have discussions about looping in those first two items into, and, and simply attempting to bond the entire renovations, first of all, relating to the townhouse, but also to the library under CPA funding bonding?
I think it goes to the overall point is, like, if we get to a point, if we all agree here tonight that these are reasonable costs in the right projects to bring forward, and we hit a budgetary crunch, you know, I think that's where we need our Brian Valentine to weigh in. And obviously, we're happy to give our, our opinion, but our opinion only goes so far, right, in terms of what he, you know, ultimately can bond in items like that. But it's possible, for sure. It's just a question of whether that's the right answer.
Okay, so did, I guess, was there, was there consideration by you all to put that in the, in that bucket right now, or either because it was short time or short money or some other reason, that it not be included?
Part of it's past practice, right, is it, there's smaller sums, but once you start adding them up, they certainly add to a bondable amount. Like, you wouldn't go and just bond the 80K on its own, sort of thing.
Correct, and I get that.
So, so I think it's something we're very focused on, but we're also trying to balance the future needs. And you'll hear when we start talking about the schools in a little bit, you know, we don't know what's coming there, and I think we need to balance that, to give ourselves the capacity down the road and not sell ourselves short now. So we could make a formal recommendation, but ultimately, I think it comes down to Brian and the finance team of how they would approach these things. And I know there are independent experts that the town has access to that would help us think through some of these things as well.
All right, Chelsea, Brian, or Sam, Lisa, I'm just going to keep skipping over you. Anything on, on any of these items?
Marty, just, were you asking if the two top items should be part of the CPC application?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that's not, sorry. I'm not a CPA expert, but my understanding is those would not qualify. As, as, as items that could be, I don't know if anyone else wants to weigh in there, but my understanding is those aren't even eligible CPA-type projects.
Yeah, that was my, that was my question, too, whether those, you had looked into that to see whether they would fall under an appropriate expenditure under CPA. My initial take was that they would not, based on the type of work, but again, I'm not an expert on it as well.
I don't know if you want to bring John Parent in. He's definitely far more expert than I am on this.
Yeah, I did, it'd be interesting to hear John on that. I, I mean, one of my observations about CPA is that, is that we've not been, we being the Town of South Row, have not been as aggressive as some other towns in, in terms of, you know, if we, my view is, the library is a historic building, and virtually any spending on the library, I think you've got a plausible argument that that falls under CPA CPC funding, but maybe, John, I'm completely off-base on this.
Hi, everyone, how you doing?
Good. So tell me how far off-base I am, John.
Unfortunately, the vast majority of the library work is in the newer section. It's not in the historic section. There's going to be some painting and some carpet in the original room in the front of the building, but the major share is over in the stacks, which was put up about 30-some-odd years ago, 30, 40 years back. So to my knowledge, it would not qualify for CPA, in my opinion. Unfortunately.
Okay, I, I hear you. And, and again, it's relatively short money. As I said, I, my view is that we've not been as aggressive as other towns have been in terms of, of targeting. I, I hear you in terms of it being the newer part of the building. I, again, it just strikes me that it's a, it's a pretty easy argument to make, that if you make a, if you do some sort of addition on a historic building, that even the addition, I would think, could be covered by CPA money. But again, I don't want to belabor it tonight, but as I said, I, I just think as a town, we haven't been as aggressive as we could be in terms of, of targeting CPA funding.
Yeah, because CPA, to my knowledge, is generally earmarked when it comes to buildings to restoration, and technically, these two projects are not restoration. They are- And technically, these two projects are not restoration. They are basically, you know, remodeling. So that would be the, the line we're walking. On the townhouse project exterior, we're restoring that to original, you know, original masonry. We're working with the sandstone. We're gonna make it look like it looked originally is the goal. The bathrooms, needless to say, the goal is not to make them look original, it's to meet codes and have, you know, functional bathrooms. And the library, I'm sure they're gonna want it more modern in the, the new section than originally.
Yeah, yeah, fair enough.
So Marty, we will go back and just confirm on that, because obviously, we're not setting that in stone tonight. But we will confirm that just to make sure no one's missing the boat on that.
Okay, thanks.
Marty, Marty, I've got a question on this, if I may.
Yeah, sure, Sam.
One, one quick comment. Marty, I agree with you. My sense is that we've not been as aggressive as we might have been historically on the CPA money. I gotta believe there are folks out there who are expert in terms of what works with CPA in other towns. And so that might be worth having somebody take a hard look at the technical aspects and see what kind of latitude there might be, not only for this, but for other things. Second, Jason, could you refresh my memory on the townhouse interior renovations for the 80K? I understand the bathrooms. What else is on the list to do other than the bathrooms and interior townhouses?
If John's still here, I'll let him detail his plans.
Yeah, we're anticipating that the bathrooms are gonna probably take up the vast majority of that, because we're looking at tiling, new stalls, bringing everything up to where we need to be with, you know, making it as functional as possible. If there's anything left, we're trying to absorb a lot of what we can at Town Hall into the capital maintenance article. We've done the big room. We've done some work downstairs. We've got the back hallway to still do. We're trying to work our way around every office, and hopefully in a couple of years, Town Hall will be in pretty good shape at this point.
Basically sprucing up, painting, maybe carpet in some places or something.
Absolutely, yep. We're trying to, we're trying to bring it back to life. It's been 1978, a lot of those rooms. It's, it's time to join the 21st century.
Yeah, but those colors are coming back from 1978, John.
We don't want them, they can keep them.
Thank you. So I guess, very briefly, I didn't touch on the facilities maintenance fund, but this is an ongoing article. It's been around for many years now. Again, spirited conversation whether this is the capital item of more repairs and maintenance. We think we'll be able to address that through policy going forward, but for now, it's obviously very prudent, and that's why it's still here, to make sure we're carrying it somewhere, and it's gonna get lost in the shuffle of whether it's capital or not. So I'm gonna move on to fire unless anyone. Okay. Just have the tiling on my screen. We have a bunch of items under fire. It's gonna take me a little bit to walk through each of them, because there's a bunch of different mechanics to it. Chief Achilles, we've spent a lot of time with, given the nature of his department and the number of items he has on his list, and candidly, the grant opportunities that are around some of these as well. We're bringing forward a replacement chief's vehicle, which again, was an FY21 item that we actually voted as capital committee to defer to fall town meeting, while we're now obviously deferring this to FY22. Main purpose of this item is to bring basically redundancy, the ability to have two vehicles on staff to run a fire scene out of, or any emergency scene out of, and have the proper equipment. Currently, there's, there's only one of those vehicles, which is assigned to the actual chief in really more functions as a vehicle day to day, and is with him 24/7, which doesn't leave adequate vehicle support for any sort of duty officer that may be filling in when the chief is not around. We've also looked at thermal imaging cameras. This is actually two, one for each fire pumper. We will continue to look at grants around these, but they need to be replaced if we can't find a grant. There's two items for self-contained breathing apparatus. And bear with me a second. They're not big numbers, but they're important, because if we aren't successful on these, we're gonna have a much bigger number next year. The first is a matching amount. We are hopeful that through the FEMA AFG grant process, that the town will be awarded a sum of close to $250,000 to cover the replacement of all self-contained breathing apparatus. That's basically what a firefighter uses to breathe in emergency situations, the big canisters you see on their back when you watch footage on the news. There is a matching component to that grant, though, that self-care would have to match the 13,000. So we really hope we have to spend this 13,000 to be able to replace over $250,000 worth of equipment in the next year or so. There's a current grant cycle ongoing, but really coming to a close, which would give us one more year of their useful life before they have to be decommissioned. So with that being said, there are some parts and pieces that will have to be replaced between now and the eventual replacement of all department cylinders, which is what the $10,000 covers. So we're hopeful that we can consolidate this in some way, shape or form. But we also assume a worst case result in that we don't get the grant soon. We have to replace some parts and pieces, but then ultimately, we end up in a best case scenario of actually getting federal funding to support the larger number. There's also IV pumps for 12,000. This is a new OEMS, which is Office of Emergency Medical Services, run by the state requirement that the chief anticipates having to implement in the next fiscal year. There is $20,000 worth of equipment that has reached its useful life, related to nozzles and hose. There's regular testing of a lot of this, so you kind of know when something has reached the end of its useful life or has failed. There's fire turnout gear fund. So this is actually gonna be two items when we come to your motions down at the end of the meeting. The chief was carrying a sum of well over $100,000 for the next two years to replace all firefighting gear. When we started to talk about it further with him, though, it became apparent that not all gear needed to be replaced in those two years. And one of the things we started to talk about was creating a fund so that there's money there in the years that the chief needs to replace gear. For everyone's benefit, fire gear lasts about 10 years. After 10 years, it has to be taken out of service, regardless of the condition it's in. But the standard these days is to have two sets of gears. So if a firefighter were to go to a fire now, come back with all sorts of carcinogen-type material on them, they have a spare set to go into after they've properly decontaminated themselves, while the gear gets cleaned and put back into service. You only have one set of gear, and you're basically putting the person back into their gear for the rest of the ship. Those of you that actually sat through Chief Achilles' assessment center last year will remember that actually each of the chief candidates had to make a presentation about the impact of cancer in the fire service. Turnout gear is one of the main items around that of how to prevent and protect firefighters. So what we are proposing is that we, we set up a recurring fund that we fund it for what Chief Achilles needs to replace in a given year, not just arbitrarily assign, you give him a big bucket of money all at once to go replace gear that may not need to be replaced. Because as you can imagine, there's a natural churn of people. People leave, people come, people have damaged sets of gear. So I always use the example of, I got a new set of gear in the fire service, and then the next year later, the town bought another new set of gear for everyone, because everyone was up. But my gear was only a year old, so I end up with two sets of gear within two years. That's not a financially prudent decision. I think it's prudent that we get into a cycle where every firefighter's gear can be replaced every five years, become a backup set, and then satisfy the 10-year time period. So what we're gonna be looking to do is set up a fund and fund it with year one. We anticipate this is gonna be about 40,000 year one and year two, and then drop to 20,000 to 25,000 thereafter. We'll have to think about what the parameters are for the chief to spend that. Does he have unilateral control? Does he need some sort of board or committee approval or town administrator approval? But ultimately, the goal is that the chief can replace gear when he needs to, based on projected timelines, and also have a way to deal with unexpected circumstances, as opposed to just replacing everyone all at once that may not need to be replaced. And finally, we are recommending a new ambulance for the town. By the, if we were to fund this at town meeting, we would take a change in approach. Previously, ambulances were paid 100% out of the ambulance fund. We're recommending that it be bonded. This is, it was an FY23 capital item. In some prior versions, it was an FY22 capital item, but it got pushed out. I'm not 100% clear on how that happened, but I think it was around looking at the ambulance fund, looking at the balance and saying, we can't support a 275K expense all at once, so we need to push it out because we don't have the money to spend it. So this is one where we've kind of changed the approach. This is the only item we've accelerated. In the conversation around this was twofold. Obviously, this is the piece of equipment no one wants to call, but they expect to show up if any of us ever need it. But two, it is one of the few assets in town that is revenue generating. So if you don't care about them showing up, they're not showing up, but you just focus on the financial aspect. There is a financial aspect to it, too. Every time this ambulance is down, we're relying on mutual aid. Whoever that mutual aid provider is, they actually get the money for that ambulance call, not the town in our ambulance fund. So that was a lot, but we thought it was important to bring all these items forward this year, and again, has unanimous consent.
I've got a couple of questions, but I'll, I'll go through some other folks first. Ms. Malinowski, anything?
Yes. On the fire turnout gear fund, two questions on that. How does, how does it work when somebody new comes on? Do they get two new sets of gear when they start? And then how do you cycle through every five years?
I saw Chief Achilles, so I don't want to answer for him. I'll let him answer that question if he can be pulled in.
Okay, so I'll ask my other question while he comes in. Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
I'm sorry about that, Chelsea. When we hire, we currently take the first set of gear and bite out of the operating budget. So depending, like last year, we hired two. That was an unexpected expense to take two sets of gear, which the full ensemble runs around 3,500 to $4,000. And then we hope that we have some capacity with some of our spare gear to fit them into the gear, to at least get them a second set of gear. That's not a great approach, and I, we looked at a better method of doing this than working with the capital committee. It was, I think we came up with a good plan of trying to have funds available to initiate an initial purchase and then start getting people in their second gear on a regular basis, so that we don't have to hold gear on till it gets its end of useful life and hope that it fits somebody.
Okay, great. Thank you. And is, is this going to be a, an article that will not close out at the end of the year? So you'll keep those funds in there, even if you don't spend it all?
I think that was.
I would defer that, but I would, I would defer to capital what their plan is.
That was our intent, so that obviously, let's just say, the chief only spends 10,000 in FY22, that we just don't fund this as much in the following year unless there's a good reason to still fund it at the same level.
Thank you.
Okay, Brian, Shea, anything?
Just confirming IV pumps item. I think I heard correct. This is a new requirement, so this isn't replacing existing equipment. Is that right?
That is correct. Sorry about that, Jason. That's correct. We, a number of our medications are required to be given through IV, in an IV bag at a certain amount. Office of Emergency Management over the last couple of years, it keeps on kicking it down the road, but they're gonna make a requirement that instead of eyeballing it, they're gonna have to go through machines, the IV pumps, much like you would have in the ER or the hospital. And we anticipate that requirement shortly, so we want to make sure we're prepared to purchase those. And there'll be new items, biomedical equipment, and we'll give them a service plan, and then we'll look at when do they need to be replaced.
Thank you.
Sam?
A quick question about the fire turnout gear fund. Jason, I think I recall that we've in the past gotten grant funding for turnout gear periodically. Does this give us a mechanism for basically taking any grant money we get, putting it in this fund and allowing that to be metered out as needed?
No. And this is my view, and Chief Achilles can certainly agree or disagree with it. Applying for AFG grants for fire turnout gear is a really bad idea, because you end up replacing gear all at once when it doesn't need to be replaced. And you can see how much trouble we're having trying to get the self-contained breathing apparatus. And once we get that, Sam, our goal is next to turn to a tanker or a tender, as we sometimes call it in the fire service, which I think is near and dear to one of your goals for this year in terms of water on the Pine Hill Road area. So I think we, when we look, again, this is my view, at the fire capital plan, there's a lot of one-time items that are better served by the AFG grant program than trying to take small components here. Now, we do, we have recently gotten grants for like gear washers in items like that, that were very special, smaller grant programs. But chief, you can certainly disagree with that, but that's just my view, having been through this process before.
No, I would, I, I will agree with you that AFG grants are good items for one big purchase. They're very challenging to get, because if, if, like the SCBA, we were, we were unsuccessful last year. So we're hoping to do it again this year. If we're unsuccessful, I think that just puts a huge burden, you know, that we kept on pushing it off and pushing off. Small grants, I think under the 50,000 makes sense, and we've been pretty successful even the last year of getting small grants, 5,000, $10,000. But I agree. And also, if you buy things that are, have a short expiration or life cycle, you're right, you end up buying them all at once, and we're, that's why we're in this predicament now. That's why we're trying to come up with a three-year phase in of a scheduled replacement, so we're not doing it all at the same time.
Right. Yeah, I, I understand that. Good point. That was not, I guess, what I was driving at. I think that what you're doing in terms of making better decisions as far as replacing gear when it needs to be replaced is exactly the right thing to do. I was hoping that the grant programs would actually generate money that could be dropped into a fund to be spent exactly as you were talking about, versus you get $20,000 and you immediately have to buy, you know, six or seven sets of gear to use that year. So it's not that flexible. It's not just, not fungible, basically. It's for specific equipment typically.
I'd agree. And I, I will commit that we'll continue to look at grant opportunities to leverage in. But I, I have this strong feeling they're gonna get far and few between, and some of the grant programs that were out there for specifics, especially protective equipment and SCBA's is, and is going away or being lessened.
Yep.
So.
So a great concept, the right underlying idea. It's a shame that the grant providers don't appreciate that and fund with money instead of forcing people to buy equipment they may not need, but that's another point. Thank you.
I've got a couple of quick questions about the, the grant match. If, is, is that, does that operate on a, on a queue system? In other words, if you don't get it in fiscal year 22, do you go in to the queue for the next year? All right, so if, if in this cycle, that plan, which, good planning, creativity, if that doesn't work, what, is there a plan B? Or is that something that gets kicked off to a later year? And I guess, related to that, what are the, what are the betting odds for, it seems like a terrific deal, $13,000 for, what, about a quarter million dollars worth of equipment in terms of a, it's not exactly matching. But if, what are the odds of that coming through? And if it doesn't come through, is there a proposed plan B that has been thought about?
Every year, you have to apply, so once you're unsuccessful or don't receive a grant, that expires. And so we had a grant in for FY20 for the same amount, and that, we were unsuccessful in the award. So we reapplied. We, before COVID, we were very optimistic. We were in a better position. The air packs were older. They were a couple of standards all out, so that was good. I will tell you that I'm cautiously optimistic. Um, I will tell you that I'm cautiously optimistic. Um, that the first round went through and it was announced in late September or October. Um, we were not awarded and, um, but unfortunately, the later we get into this fiscal year, the chance of getting awarded start to wane. And that's the next challenge is, I'm concerned if we try to do another, a third time for the grants. And if we're unsuccessful, then we're even that further out and we're putting that amount of burden for the whole amount into the out years that might be more challenging.
And Marty, for your benefit, we're, if we flash forward to next year, if the chief hasn't secured a grant, we're carrying a large sum, we're carrying a quarter million dollars for consideration. Uh, because it's going to be one of those things we're not going to have a choice on, but funding mechanism we may have a choice on.
Yeah, okay. All right. I think. I, I think we're good on this page then.
The good news is the list gets a lot smaller. Uh, so go to MIS. I know Thomas in the audience. Uh, one item here, which is really just for our server and storage infrastructure upgrade. We're carrying 90,000, um, right now, based on some quotes that Tom has, has gotten. Um, no pressure, but Tom does have a, a tendency to come in under his budgets, uh, for what he, uh, presents on capital items, just based on my experience with him on the public safety building. But I know he is working to try to get that number down. But given how the town, how much the town is relying on technology right now, we're carrying the quoted amount that he's gotten at this point, um, to make sure we're in a good position moving forward.
Tom, if, do you want to talk a little bit about exactly what this will do? And, and if, if, as Jason says, it's, you're going to come in at 60,000 instead of 90,000?
Sure, I can, uh, speak to what we'll do. I cannot, uh, guarantee on any, uh, savings. Uh, but certainly if there are savings, you'll get them back into general fund type thing. So, uh, so currently I am running, uh, four, it's called virtual hosts. Um, so four physical servers ranging in age from three years to eight years. Uh, so historically, these servers have been replaced one at a time. Uh, hence the, the age range. Uh, part of the issue is that the way they are currently set up, each server has its own, um, hard disks associated. So any virtual server that runs on that machine, um, is reliant on that hard disk infrastructure. Part of this would be to do a centralized storage array so that, um, you know, it will make maintenance that much easier, reliability, um, better. So ultimately this is a much better solution for, for the town infrastructure. And it addresses some of the aging hardware that we have.
Okay, well, we've got Tom on the line. Is, are there any questions from members of the board? Yeah, Sam?
Just a question. Uh, Tom, uh, is there any possibility of approaching our Southborough-based friends at Dell about getting a deal on service from them to, uh, as a measure of generosity?
So that is the vendor that I go through. Um, and I, I'm, I won't get into details, but they do offer, uh, pretty steep discounts. Uh, I don't know if it's just because we are Southborough or, uh, because we're in the sled environment. Uh, but they, they definitely do offer some steep discounts or off, uh, list price.
Might be interesting to take a look at if somebody knows somebody at Dell to say, you know, you're here, you're in the, in the community about helping us. Not a huge number here, but maybe it helps certainly.
All right, I don't see any other indications. So I think we're done with IT. Thank you, Tom.
Welcome. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to police, we have two items, uh, which is replacement of all defibrillators and cruisers and the purchase of two police cruisers. Um, the pricing continues to change on the cruisers in particular. Um, I think every two weeks, the chief forces a slightly different number. So we've agreed with the chief on a maximum amount here, um, that we know he just will not go over. Um, and obviously to the extent that there's some small savings that can be achieved, uh, he's going to definitely work through that. On the defibrillators, any of you that watched our meeting, there was significant conversation about, um, you know, the age of them, et cetera. There was also conversation about whether general fund is the right answer or Harvard Fund. Um, I was able to confirm with Chief Paulus today that he did have, uh, the fire department look at all the defibrillators just to make sure that everything would be okay until FY twenty-two. And they did replace, um, all batteries and pads, which are the critical components. And those are the parts that do expire. So the chief was very confident that these will last until July, um, first. And, um, you know, now it just becomes a matter of, uh, should Harvard funds be used for it? Or, um, is this something we should be using general fund appropriation? I know Chief Achilles and Chief Paulus naturally use that for other items that aren't typical budgeted items. But I felt it was important that I just raise it, given any of you that were following our meeting. Um, there was a decent amount of discussion around that, actually far more than about the cruisers themselves.
I think this is probably pretty straightforward. Yeah, I don't see any indication of any discussion on these items.
Okay. So then, um, this last one should hopefully be very familiar to all of you. I believe most of you, obviously, were on the board last year. This is actually a holdover from last year. I believe you voted unanimously in support of it, at least the membership from last year did. Uh, to bring this forward as a CPA-funded article related to Calander Field. This project in and of itself has a pretty long history of coming before town meeting and numerous engineering reports. But, uh, we did continue to support this even though it was a FY twenty-one item. Um, you know, that CPA was planning to bring forward, uh, to town meeting. So I don't know if there's any questions on this one still, but, um, for sake of completeness, we included it in our presentation.
I, yeah, I for one don't have any questions now. I can't imagine just the history of this thing, that there aren't going to be questions about it down the line. It's just one of those items. Anyone else? No, all set. Thanks, Jason.
Okay. So then I promised to go through items that were deferred or removed because I think it's really important to understand. I mean, this is where the committee spent a lot of time. Uh, many of you know that there is a planned, uh, project along Quarterville Road, um, that has been in the works for many, many years. It's about 2.5 million dollars total cost. Um, even after taking into account the shared streets program money that would hopefully be applied where we're at with chapter 90, it's obviously a significant project. And as we talked through it with Karen, it became very apparent that this is not going to be ready for funding for FY twenty-two. There's a big, there's a big catch that, and I think, um, some of you have referenced it in prior meetings. We strongly believe that this is one of those shovel-ready type projects that we need to be ready to go with because no one knows where infrastructure programs will go after, uh, the November election and what Congress decides to do, or even our state and local government decide, uh, state government decides to do. So we would advocate that you, as the board of selectmen, continue to keep the pressure on to make sure we have shovel-ready type items. Our committee is happy to facilitate as much as possible. But obviously this is more, you know, getting the engineering drawings in place, helping to coordinate the public meetings. There would be needed to vet such a project, add sidewalks, et cetera. But, um, you know, there's no objection to the concept of it. It just was very clear that funding-wise, it wasn't ready for prime time. And there may be a way to avoid funding all of it through the tax, tax burden in the general fund. The next one was, was also a tough conversation related to the Quarterville Hall project. Obviously, your board had a presentation on it last year. The council and agent has done a very good job of articulating what the needs are. But we're also in an environment where that building is now been shut for nine or 10 months to the public, at least. Obviously, you know, there's still departments working in there. There's two parts to that project, if you remember. There's the siding and then there's the actual renovation, um, of it. But because of the, the actual age of the building and the ADA requirements, going over a certain dollar threshold will trip a full ADA compliance in the building. Based on the math we've done with John Parent, we estimate that's about 325 K. So that's the maximum we're carrying in the capital plan for this item. But remember, we also expected that ACABET would actually be able to do the work. They did great work on the golf clubhouse, as many of you are aware. They had originally given us a timeline of FY, fall of 2022. Um, that was what everyone was working with last year. They have now said they're going to be available no earlier than the fall of 2023. So funding it now will do nothing for us with an ACABET perspective. You're also very well aware of the conversations we're having with the schools. And should the decision be made that it's, one of the schools is no longer needed, that obviously is a much, uh, primer, uh, location and opportunity for the seniors to get well-deserved space. So for all those reasons, we are not recommending that now. We certainly will have the wind, the, the door open at any time should facts change in terms of ACABET magically becoming available. And/or, um, obviously, once we get to a conclusion on the schools, in, in where that direction is headed. Um, we've tried to reach out as much as possible to the council and agent, make them aware of this. Um, but as you also recall, we did find a way to get the bathroom funded last year, which was the most critical need. Now, before moving on from this, I also should, should point out that there's the siding component, right? And, and at some point, you know, we do have departments working there. This, there needs to be some exterior work. And if John Parent's still here, he can go into any more details on, on what would be needed there if anyone wants more details. But we did talk about like whether it was worth doing the siding, but waiting on the renovation. But as you could imagine, if you do the siding and then you decide two years from now, or one year from now, you decide to renovate that building and bump it out because the school plan falls through, et cetera. Um, you're basically ripping new siding off to add something on and having to reapply it. So, uh, it just didn't seem very prudent, but the clock is ticking on that piece of the project. So I think the pressure is on capital to decide the fate of Quarterville longer term. And obviously, you know, what our recommendations would be around that. And finally, the, um, item we removed from the capital plan after much discussion was an emergency generator for the townhouse. So as many are aware, the senior center currently functions as, um, one of our shelters in town, uh, should we need to open it. The new public safety facility obviously has a massive generator to, uh, service emergency functions, including an emergency operations center and the training room if needed. The committee was, was initially torn on whether the generators even needed at the townhouse. And, and when we talked about it extensively with John Parent in particular, what we found was there was never an engineering drawing to install like a full building generator. So what the plan was, was to take the old fire station generator at 21 Main Street, move that over to the townhouse and then wire it for about $65,000. Instead, what we've learned is to keep the heating running in that building and to keep, you know, critical infrastructure running if we had a massive power outage. Obviously, we've displayed that the town can operate remotely. But we also feel like, um, this project could be funded by a grant. And there's no rush. There's no critical need to it that we could see at the time. So we actually removed the emergency generator from the capital plan altogether. We fully support getting an emergency generator using grant funding of some way, shape or form, and we can fit, work through a match if needed. But we also have an asset that could be worth up to 15,000 to 20,000 dollars sitting in what I'll call dry dock at the DPW. And one of our requests tonight is to actually declare that as surplus property so that the town can auction it off and, um, get some revenue for it, assuming you're comfortable with our approach of removing the emergency generator. So I don't know how you want to deal with all those, Marty, but there's three, obviously, uh, long topics.
Well, I'll go, um, are there any questions or comments on, on any of them? I guess we'll start that way. Uh, I'll start with you, um, Chelsea.
Um, on the Quarterville Road project, what are the next steps for getting that to be shovel-ready?
Karen had to do some more engineering, um, diagrams. We haven't heard back from her, so I will follow up with her. Um, and she needs to hold some public hearings. I know she was very, um, concerned about doing it in a Zoom environment. But, uh, given that it went, you know, there are some people that just aren't so comfortable with it. But I did think she thought she could do something at the DPW barn in a socially distanced way to allow people to actually look at detailed drawings if they were interested in the project and not comfortable with the Zoom setting. So I think it's really helping her to facilitate those and get those on the books and, and not lose sight of, of the project overall.
So does she have the funding available to do any further engineering studies?
That part is unclear to us.
Um, on any of the three, Chelsea, is that it?
Uh, that was it. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I'll go to you next, Brian.
Uh, Jason, it may be an unfair question for you, and if so, I can, we could wait and ask Karen. But the Quarterville Road project, do you know if easements are required for that?
Uh, we asked that question. The answer was no, a categorical no.
So that will help facilitate, or make it quicker to, to get it shovel-ready as opposed to having to wait for a town meeting to get the easements done. Quarterville Hall project, the cost for the siding, does that play into the calculation on the, um, ADA threshold?
My understanding is yes.
Okay. Uh, that's all I have, Marty.
Okay, Sam?
Thanks. Um, yeah, I've followed a lot of the conversations in the committee on these items. And I think you guys have done a great job in terms of walking around, looking at the possibilities. Um, I think that the shovel-ready project list is a great idea. And I've actually, I think I heard Karen at one of your meetings comment that she was interested in looking at the possibility of moving some money from chapter 90 bucket to engineering for shovel-ready product projects. And if that's a possibility, I think that's something that's worth considering for other projects in addition to the Quarterville Road thing. That's it for me.
Yeah, no, and, and Sam, I think mainly to Chelsea's question, but right, this is Public Works Planning Board, in my view of, you know, how, how do we team together, right, to, to get, it's just Karen where she needs help on some of these things. But, you know, to, to just make sure we don't, you know, lose our momentum.
Great idea, which I fully support.
Jason, it, it, it's sort of interesting. I mean, it, it, it's something that, 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 I don't want to say it bothered me, but it's, it's stuck in the back of my mind. Um, and that is for the Quarterville Hall project. Um, and it, it's, it's, you know, very much in favor of it being deferred for all the reasons you set out. But it's particularly if, if the, the school discussions don't end up with the possibility of the town getting a, a significant additional, um, asset that might become available for seniors. It is, there's, there's a little bit of, maybe more than a little bit of discomfort I have. Um, um, working to stay below a funding threshold so that ADA requirements don't kick in for a building that is going to be the primary focus for our seniors. Um, and, um, are, 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 are we missing the forest for the trees there? And in some respects, should making sure that that building, if it's going to be even a medium term, but particularly if we, if we identify it as a longer-term, um, facility for the senior center. Again, are, 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 are we losing the forest for the trees by, by focusing on keeping under a number? Um, and not doing as much as we can from an ADA perspective? Have you guys talked about that? Has there been any discussion?
I, right, it's a, it's a step plan, right? So if the school discussion falls through. So if the school discussion falls through, then we're going to evaluate Cordova Hall in a much different light than we've been looking at it before. And I think the conversation goes something like this. Is Cordova Hall where we should be investing, right? Or is there a better way to deploy at least, whether it's 325 or something else? But is that the right building to be investing in? And is that the right place to be citing a senior center? Right?
Okay.
And I, and this is just my view is that the, the reason that the council and agent was focused on that site was because that's where they're currently at. But I think we owe it to them. And I think this, this will answer your question, is, is that the right site? And is there something we can do better? And it may cost a little more money, but it may be a much longer term solution as opposed to putting a Band-Aid on, which is what that 325 would be.
Yeah, okay. All right. Fair enough.
And I think this is one of those projects that, you know, you could call a special town meeting for if, if facts change, you know, down the road, right? You know, but it's just, there's too many open items right now. But I'll get to it in the school discussion. We're going to have good clarity come January.
Yeah.
We're going to know where, where that, where that ship is headed. And then that'll allow us to start to evaluate these a little more.
Okay. And from the, the townhouse emergency generator, are, are, are you all comfortable that there's enough of a, you know, sort of of safety cushion that if something happens and there's not an emergency generator there?
Well, there isn't one now. You don't have one now.
No, no, I understand. So is there, i- is there a comfort level, you know, and, and we've, we've survived up until now? But is I, I guess the simple question is what happens if an emergency generator is needed? And there's not an emergency generator there? I understand it's been an issue that, that, that has been in place in previous years, but is the risk, is the risk going up?
Why don't, why don't you bring John Parent in? Because I think he, he has thought through this long and hard, so.
Yeah, John, every, is, is the risk going up from year to year? Or is it just the same risk as we faced in past years and, and it hasn't come to fruition? So it, it, it's worth that risk? Or is it something else?
In reality, it's, it's pretty much the same risk. And as I talked about with Capitol when we met, take a catastrophic, we'll say ice storm situation, where all of a sudden we lose power at the town hall. All right, now luckily, you know, the one good thing we've learned from COVID is we can become very remote very quickly now. People can work from home, so that's the first thing. In order to protect the building, worst case scenario, if the heat's off for a couple of days, I winterize the building, we're going to drain the heating system. That's a very quick, easy solution. As for the, the telephone system works through there, it has a battery backup for a, a certain amount of time. Worst case scenario, again, we, we run a small generator up there and we power the phone system. So you're not really under the gun in this situation, in my opinion. So if there is a way to work a grant to get a brand new system, I really do think that's a prudent course to follow here.
Okay. All right. Yeah, Brian, that, that seems reasonable, but for Mr. Shea.
John, while you're still here, so you, understanding that answer, let's say we did have that ice, the catastrophic ice storm situation. Are you comfortable that you would have adequate time to not only winterize townhouse, but all the other town facilities and town buildings that would not have generators?
The drain systems generally does not take that long. I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna open valves and you're gonna drain water is what it really comes down to. And with the amount of people we have, we should be able to do it relatively quickly.
Well, I'd be curious, Marty, as well, I don't know if Mark has any input and any recommendation on, on this as well.
So, you know, I was, I was a little bit, I think Jason used the word, you know, a little bit conflicted, but I was conflicted differently in terms of, you know, whether we needed this more quickly than, than not. In a perfect environment, if we, if we did lose power at the townhouse for an extended period of time, you know, we could relocate our offices into some of the other buildings. In a COVID environment, that doesn't work. I do agree though with what, with what John said. And, and again, to give a tip of the hat to Tom for that, we can become remote pretty quick. Now, given our, our requirement to do that with, with COVID on and off here. So I think that's taught us that, you know, as Jason said, this may be something that, you know, isn't needed right now, it's something we can wait for. We've had great success in terms of grants. You know, we got one for DPW, we got one for the senior center. So I think, you know, we can wait until that opportunity comes around for the townhouse as well.
Okay, Brian, you all set?
Yeah, you know, and it's not all that long ago, we had that hurricane that came through where a good portion of the town, if not all the town, was without power for three to four days. We had that October snowstorm where the same, same thing resulted. You know, both of those instances occurred where we didn't run the risk of buildings freezing. So, you know, I guess trying to, obviously COVID has put us in a position where we can, you know, adapt and perhaps keep working remotely. But, you know, just want to be in a position where we're not putting the buildings themselves at risk should we, you know, run into that catastrophic situation when, you know, there's, it's in December, January timeframe and you run the risk of, you know, major plumbing failures inside the buildings, that's all.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. Yeah, again, I mean, you know, one of the, one of the few bright spots of COVID is it's, it's taught us a lot more about how to become more remote. You know, very quickly. But, but the, but the, but the tone of John's voice has given me confidence that, that long-term damage to the building is probably not much of a, of a, much of a risk. And if we can fund this without using taxpayers' money, that's a good thing.
Good on us?
Yep. Yes, sir.
All right. So items in the works, you're very aware of what we're trying to do with South Union School. We're very hopeful that there will be some sort of article around this for, for town meeting. I think just for the board to start thinking about is we expect the appraisal any day now. How you want to advance this topic in what form and, and who should be advancing it? Obviously, we, you know, there's certain decisions you as a board would have to make based on the data that we understand and get. But, you know, should that, you know, how much of that's in public, how much is in executive session? Which committee is driving it or board driving it, et cetera? So start to give that some thought, I don't need a reaction tonight, but that is coming to you, Mr. Healy, very soon for a decision on how, how we advance it. You'll notice that the main thing that isn't, hasn't been covered yet, there's been references to it, is the school. So I made reference to the school research subcommittee. The latest update there is we, with the school committee's support, are undertaking a very detailed enrollment study, far more detailed than the school has ever taken, including back at the time in the 2013 report that was done and, and where certain recommendations were made and, and decisions were made, et cetera. We will have that by the middle of January. It is going to become a very abundantly clear after that point where we're going to go, all right, in, in what the school committee's intentions are and how we collaborate. The collaboration has, has really been truly something that I think the town deserves. And there's no, you know, it's a joint ownership at this point, is how I would term it. And I give a lot of credit to the school committee members that could have, you know, just gone off and run, run with this. But they see the bigger picture for the town. And, you know, everything with that, what that administration is having to deal with in terms of keeping our kids in school on top of dealing with this, you know, should be commended. But here's why it matters. We haven't put forward any capital items tonight for, for school committee. If we had followed the capital plan, there would have been another $2 million for the Neri roof in the Neri parking lot. The, the school capital planning subcommittee, which is a subcommittee of the school committee, too many committees, met earlier this evening, I don't know what they formally resolved, but the general direction that they were headed was that they wouldn't have a capital item related to Neri until they know what the fate of the, of all three, you know, elementary, you know, of, of all the schools right now in terms of Finn, Woodward, Neri and Trotter, in terms of whether there could be any consolidation. So my job tonight is to leave open the possibility that I come back to in a very short discussion with one school-related capital item for next year. I don't know what it would be, but it, it could take on many different flavors. It could be feasibility for the next phase of this. Like, how do we deal with Neri? What do we need to do with Woodward? Does anything need to be done with Finn? Or maybe we, we stay at bay for a year. But the key reason I want to leave it open is because of the way the MSBA timeline works in terms of being able to get that matching funding from the state, which is so critically important to being able to fund it. So really, the item that I can anticipate maybe coming forward, maybe school related at a later point. But we chose as a committee not to vote on anything on school. School committee hasn't voted because I think we all want to understand where this thing is going before we make, you know, decisions of that magnitude. I've already talked about the maintenance articles, I'm not going to go into that again. And we have had an initial spirited conversation about, you know, if Chief Achilles's chief vehicle is approved at town meeting, what happens kind of with that extra vehicle and making sure that we don't end up with an extra vehicle in the fleet? In that there is some sort of repurposing. I know there's a lot of ideas of what vehicles could be replaced or not, but it's not important to tonight's discussion, but it is something you probably see us talking about in the future, assuming a positive vote at town meeting. So, final slide. With that, given that we have taken votes, you know, we would appreciate if you're ready to vote, that you vote, you know, yes or no on the capital items that were presented to you tonight. We'd also vote that you support, you know, a warrant article for fire turnout gear, as discussed. We'd also vote that, ask that you vote to declare the emergency generator from 21 Main Street as surplus property. So Mark can undertake the proper steps there. I'll go back to the policy once we get through that. And then, you know, discuss and prioritize with the staff and the committees to streamline grant applications. I know advisory is talking about it, you've talked about it to some extent, we're talking about it. But really just identifying some sort of point, person or persons that will be on the lookout to try to facilitate and, and kind of funnel grants to many different directions. And I don't want to get into an advisory conversation tonight, but you, you can watch the advisory meeting from last week too, and there were some good ideas, but I think it really starts at the top in terms of the BOS, you know, coming up with a plan of how to streamline some of that. I guess maybe Marty, I'll pause there and then I'll finish with capital planning. If you want to take it or open it up to anyone else.
Um, yeah, before I open up to, and get some thoughts from other members of the board, Mark, just, I mean, my inclination is, it, it strikes me, Jason, what you are looking for on your, on your, on the capital items is whether or not we support the direction you've taken with all those and whether or not we have an issue with any of them. And the reason I framed it that way is it strikes me that, that, that I don't think we need to take a, I'm not even sure what the vote would be tonight specifically, but it strikes me that, that, that a vote by the board, if the board is so inclined to support it, that the capital items put forth by, that we support the capital items put forth by your committee, i- is that sufficient comfort for you? In, in, in other words, are you guys done with your job at that point? As opposed to us going through each one and voting, I'm not even sure what the vote would be, Mark, to, to, because they're not in warrant articles yet, they're not as part of a, specifically part of a budget. So it strikes me that what we're looking for is whether or not we support the items as opposed to whether or not we support them as part of a town, town meeting presentation at this point.
So I think that, you know, the, the question is whether or not the board would support, you know, the articles as presented, as recommended by the capital committee in total. This all would fall under, with the exception of, of the maintenance. And Jason can correct me, you know, if I'm wrong. The facilities maintenance is its own separate article. And whether or not we're going to separate out the, the sidewalk maintenance or not, or whether that's all going to end up in one capital article. So I know that Brian Ballantyne, when we take our first blush at what the budgets could look like next year and the revenues and impacts and tax increases, we're carrying the number right now in that, in those calculations that, that is being recommended by Capitol at this point.
Yeah, Marty, maybe to, my intent is, as the drafter on the side is, if there's an objection from, from the board, or there's a, a specific item here that you're not comfortable supporting or want more details on, I'd rather know that now than in January, when you go to just take your formal vote on, you know, the articles that are in front of you for the annual town meeting, if that's when you're doing it.
I mean, I, I will say this is a lot different than in prior years. Usually Capitol is, I don't want to say the afterthought, but we set the operating pieces first and then we look at Capitol. And this year, Capitol has done an awful lot of work. I think that, you know, the committee overall, you know, really should be commended for what they've done because they've taken a hard look at, at what's scheduled, where it's scheduled and how it's going to be paid for. And I think that in a very difficult year that we all knew was coming, you know, they've, they've given us as much wiggle room in terms of Capitol, you know, while not, you know, leaving behind some of those things and improvements and to our infrastructure that we need to do.
So I'm going to come back full circle. So Jason, I think you and I are saying the same thing and, and, and all of the items you presented, and as I said, I, I suspect other folks on, on our board have done the same thing I've done, which is to, you know, follow with a decent amount of detail the meetings you've had. So, so very little was a surprise tonight. And I, I mean, I agree with Mark, you know, first I'll pat ourselves on the bar, on the back. One of the smartest things we did this year was create your committee. And, you know, and then you guys just took off. And the work you've done and the way you've structured this, this, not just the presentation, but the way you've structured the, the, the capital outlook for fiscal year 22 and beyond, you know, is, is beyond an enormous benefit to the town. So my view is, is, I mean, I support all of the, the items that you've put into a capital bucket tonight, including for discussion down the road, the, the maintenance, you know, capital versus operational in terms of the amounts. But if you leave here tonight with a vote of our committee, supporting those items, is that sufficient? As opposed, in your mind, as opposed to a much more detail going through each one and identifying that we support it?
I guess, yeah, I, I would, because I would say, I think you're two, you have two potential motions. If everyone's in support of everything we've brought forward tonight, it's one motion and you can encompass all of it. If any of your members do not support one thing, I would hold that back and take a split, a split vote.
Yeah, I just haven't gotten a sense, but I'll, I, I will now take the temperature of the other members of the board. Is that sort of an omnibus approach to a motion, something that the, the members of our board are comfortable with? I'll start, I guess, with you, Ms. Malinowski.
Yes, I think I, I support everything that's on the list. I think my one concern, and I think Jason kind of alluded to this earlier, is if we get into the budget cycle with the operating budgets and we, we start to have a larger increase than what is palatable for the town, then it sounds like we have some option to bond things over a longer period of time or look at under, you know, some other sources. So I would, I would be in support, there's no item that I would pull out of here for tonight's motion.
All right. And Lisa, I'm going to get to you last, but I'm going to hear from the other folks first. Brian?
So I have no reason to pull out and, and not support any of the items that have been recommended. And I think that, and I would say that I'm supportive of this being the direction to give to Mark and Brian to plug these numbers in for the budgets that are presented. I'd just say similar to what happened in the spring with the number of departmental budget requests that we reviewed and talked to people about. Individually, every single piece made sense. But it's when you compiled everything and you saw the net effect on the tax rate. But it's when you compiled everything and you saw the net effect on the tax rate, that's where, you know, decisions need to be made. So I think it's worthwhile plugging these in now. But, and I'm not saying that I would, you know, cut capital as a way, but, you know, if we're in a situation where we're faced with a tax increase higher than what we might be comfortable with, something has to give somewhere. And we may, I may need to revisit some of the items at that time. But at this point, I think we should have Mark and Brian plug these in to move forward with those.
And Jason, I assume that you and your committee understand that, that we're not, that you didn't do your work in a vacuum and, and we're not looking at this in a vacuum.
Well, yeah, and look, three of us are on advisory, so we're going to have to deal with it in that respect too. So, yeah, I think we're just trying to make sure that someone does, I don't support this because of the concept, not because we get the town maybe in a different position three months from now because no one obviously knows where this thing is going.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's pretty much what I was getting at. Sam, your views?
I concur with Brian and Chelsea. At this point in time, all this looks very reasonable. I certainly support it with a reservation that things may change, but we'll see what happens.
And Ms. Brascio, are you going to go off the reservation and abandon your committee? Or I'm assuming, I left you for last because I'm assuming that, that you've, you've, you've been at all the meetings where this has been discussed in even greater detail than tonight.
No, I support all the comments that have been made.
Okay, then, I will give a shot at a motion. I move that we, that the Board of Selectmen support the recommendations of the capital committee put forward tonight, both for purposes of items to, to go forward for fiscal year '22, as well as items to be deferred or for other reasons not to be put forward in FY '22. And that consistent with that, that the town administrator and our finance team going forward, plug those numbers into our FY '22 ongoing budget process.
Second.
All right, discussion? None? Ms. Malinau, oh, Ms. Now, Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. Jason, hopefully that is, you got what you were looking for on those, the items you talked about tonight.
Did you vote specifically on the surplus property?
No, 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 those are, those are, those are separate.
Okay.
It seems to me.
Yeah, so I'm good with bullet point one.
Okay. Bullet point two was the, what was your bullet point two? Was, the surplus was bullet point three.
Turnout gear, just supporting the turnout gear fund.
Okay.
I will move that the Board of Selectmen support a warrant article to set up the fire turnout gear replacement fund.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, none? Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. That also is unanimous. And then the third bullet was, I'll move to declare, declare the, what is the, what's the name of the item?
Emergency generator from the old fire station at 21 Main Street.
As surplus property.
Second.
Discussion, none? Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye, also unanimous.
So I think, Mr. Healy, that leaves us with capital planning policy. And this is just more of an FYI to all of you moving forward is, we have been looking at other towns in very preliminary stages of looking at other towns' capital planning policies. And I highlighted some of the things we may focus on. But to the extent any members of your board have used or have seen other policies, we are looking at a few towns in particular, certainly send them our way because Alton will need you and your board to adopt that policy on our behalf. But we are working to hopefully have that in November, so you should see that forthcoming. But obviously, to extend, and if you have strong opinions of which direction we should go, please don't hesitate to reach out.
I have one, and I'm, I'll open it up to other folks. I have one very strong opinion, and that is that we've got an article, a bylaw in the town about our advisory committee that precludes, other than, you know, ad hoc or the equivalent committees, advisory being on second committees. And I, I just think that the performance of the capital committee has underscored that there are issues with that bylaw and that there are a lot of good reasons for having sort of cross-pollination between advisory and capital. And I don't know if that's one of the things you're looking at from the other towns, but obviously that'd take a warrant article. But it just, my personal view is that opening up the possibility for, in fact, maybe even the requirement that advisory members serve, are able to serve on a second committee, a capital committee, makes a great deal of sense. That, that, that's my main thought in this area.
So let me probe that a little more, just so that we, right, you know, with Kathy and Andrew here as well, we can take it back to advisory for consideration too. Is, are you also advocating that capital planning lose its ad hoc status at some point? Or?
I think they have to, Jason.
Okay, that, that, that's kind of the question. I, I lived on an ad hoc committee for three years, but that was a little, it was obviously specific to a building. But are you kind of saying, try to figure out a way to make it work, but also make it not an ad hoc committee moving forward?
Yeah, I think, again, I personally am in comfort, I, I can understand an ad hoc committee for, you know, if the public safety building committee, if that had been ad hoc, if that had been termed ad hoc, I get that. But, but a committee that, that, I mean, looking forward, you know, you, you guys have earned your, or shown your spurs in this whole thing. And I'm not sure if, if certainly I could be convinced that going forward, the town, if they don't, certainly if we don't need, we certainly are incredibly well-served by having a capital committee. And if that's our view, then it should be a permanent committee that we acknowledge and, 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 you know, have specific guidance for, et cetera. But the other thing that's pretty clear is that there's an enormous benefit to having folks from advisory being loosened up from the current bylaw to be on a committee like this. I don't know, do other, other members of, of the Board of Selectmen want to weigh in? They said, that's my view.
I agree, 100%.
I do too.
I agree.
Marty, do you see Kathy's, has her hand up?
I was just going to say that. Mrs. Cook has her hand up.
Kathy, just so you know, our plan is to never let you stop being on town committees.
Hey, oh, Marty. Anyway. So, so can I add a couple of thoughts to this discussion?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
It is likely that advisory is going to ask the Board of Selectmen to amend the advisory bylaw anyway, which we'll get into more later, on something that's fairly cut and dry. So this might be a good time to do this at the same time. I think the distinction between being on an ad hoc committee and a permanent committee is a distinction with no meaning. I don't know, I don't know where that comes from. I don't know why it was thought that ad hoc was fine, permanent wasn't. So I fully support this. And I don't support making it mandatory, I will say that. But I do support allowing advisory to be on permanent committees when it's appropriate. And this is certainly one that I think is appropriate. I do think it should be a separate committee so that we can have other people who are interested in advisory and have relevant backgrounds be on this one. For example, the position that Jason's been talking about, that it would be nice to be filled as far as a engineer and/or architect. So you've got my support for it. And again, maybe somebody remembers why it was written the way it was. I don't know why it would, why it matters whether advisory is limited to ad hoc versus permanent.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I go back quite a ways and I, I don't think that's a, that's of recent vintage. I, I think, you know, way back when, when I first got on a town committee, that was in effect.
I agree. I think it goes way, way back.
Yeah. Okay, so I guess there may, I may have some other thoughts and I'd be interested to see what, what, I mean, I always think it's great to, to, you know, look at a wheel that already exists instead of starting from scratch. So I'd be interested in seeing what, what some other towns are doing. And I'll, I'll probably dive in myself and take a look at. Have you found some, Jason or Kathy, that you've, that, that seem, you know, particularly sound in terms of the way they're structured?
We'll, we'll circulate links to the board, just so you can kind of see what we're working with when I circulate. Andrew Pfaff has done a lot of research. I've done a lot of research on it in particular.
Okay.
That I think we have a good starting point. I mean, some communities have gotten grants to write theirs, but then when you start reviewing them, all of them seem to have some of the same language. And then there's obviously specific local provisions.
Okay. Well, all that sounds good. So, yeah, that's my main thing from a policy perspective. I just think that we, we should loosen up some of the strictures that we've put on our committees. Again, you know, 50 years ago, and nobody can remember why we did it. Are you, are you good? Are you done?
We are good, unless you have any questions for us or any of the other committee members have anything they want to add.
I do not. Again, Jason, Kathy, Andrew, I don't want, I'll miss some of the folks on, on your committee.
Jeff, Joe.
Yeah. I always forget Lisa.
Yeah.
But, but, but again, and I think, I think my view is shared by everybody on our board that, you know, I thought it was a good idea when the suggestion was made that we try to, you know, reinvigorate what had existed in the past. I, I could not have foretold that it was going to be as effective and beneficial for the town as, as, as it's been. You know, fiscal year '22 is going to be a tough budget year for the town. You guys have already made it, I think, a little bit tougher than it might be, and that's incredibly appreciated. And there's an awful lot of nodding from members of, other members of the board. So we will get on to the rest of our business.
Can I procedurally just move to close our, I'll make a motion that the capital planning committee adjourn its meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Brascio?
Aye.
Hark? Palmer?
Aye.
Pfaff?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
And Malinowski's aye. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
All right, all of you as well. Have good nights.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Motion to adjourn? Oh, no, that's right.
Second.
All right, we are on to our next item, 3B on the agenda, which is the review of the draft for the downtown initiative. And Lisa, I'm going to turn this over to you. And I will tell, I think, I think the other folks on the board might have been, might be aware that, you know, Lisa has been beyond just our point person on this. But, you know, I'm amazed at when we had Judy Barrett in in September and then in early October, that we've gotten to the point we are as quickly as we have at the end of October. So thanks for that and, and take it away.
Thank you. Obviously, a lot's taken place since our last meeting when we approved Judy Barrett's contract. It has been an extremely collaborative effort. I have to tell you, it's, it has been great to see town process actually work. Before we get into the review, there's just a few things that I wanted to share and a question actually to ask of you, Marty, as well. So speaking on the timeline specifically, we're trying to do, everything we do, we're trying to be mindful of the timeline that's been presented to us in looking for a spring town meeting. And again, knowing probably a spring town meeting is going to be delayed as well, but we're still moving on the track of trying to get something together. But obviously, at the end of the day, I think everybody involved agrees that we obviously want the best, the best by law for downtown, the subsection, and something that's going to pass town meeting. You know, it's having a collaborative, positive response. So based on that, EDC is meeting on Thursday to discuss the draft that's before you. Planning Board is discussing it on Monday. So on a timeline schedule, I would ask, as we move forward, Marty, that obviously, I think we need another joint meeting based on the first round of comments. Comments will be turned in from all boards, committees and department heads to Lori Esposito on the 6th. We'll get those to Judy Barrett, and she can work on updating the comment sheet. But I think at least one more meeting would be pertinent, I think. Because again, we're not going to know all the comments initially that Planning Board may have. And I think we were given a very good first draft. So just to try to stay on the timeline as much as we can, I would ask, if possible, to have a joint meeting. And I know we've had a million meetings every single Tuesday, but I think this one's important. And I think we could wrap up a lot of things with a joint meeting and hearing the feedback from the other department heads, boards, committees, commissions, and so on and so forth. So I would ask, if possible, that we schedule a meeting, a joint meeting, specifically for the downtown initiative, for all shareholders on, if possible, the 10th of November. So I'll start there. And again, that's, that's just to move forward. I mean, it would be great if, if the comments were, you know, a lot of the same and minimal. You know, it just continues on the path of moving forward. So.
Okay, and I, I am fine with that. I am, I am assuming that, I mean, obviously, the meeting we had, had a few weeks ago was the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, EDC, Shopsy also weighed in. I'm assuming this would be a broader meeting than that. And we would make sure that, that other stakeholders, including, I guess, as much public notice as possible to hear from, you know, the, not, not just town committees and boards and the like, but also in some respects, the real stakeholders. So I'm, I'm, I am fine with that. I mean, it's, I, let me give you my, my reaction, and it'll be interesting because my, I mean, God knows, I'm not a zoning person. And so reading through this, my primary goal, if you will, for the, for this zoning bylaw is, is the mixed-use perspective. And I know others, others have, you know, different views and they're more conversant in the zoning world, et cetera, et cetera. And this clearly accomplishes that. And I guess I'm just kind of curious, and, and obviously, the discussion tonight will, do other folks share that view generally? Or are there real details and specifics in the zoning article that you've focused on reviewing when we got it, you know, I guess, the end of last week and the like? I'm, I guess I'm curious to hear folks' thoughts about that.
Well, so that's kind of, I think, Marty, when we go through, that's kind of how I planned it, is to talk about specifics. Because I think there's, there's things within the article. I don't think the affordable housing component is enough, you know? And I know Shopsy, and again, Chelsea, you can speak for Shopsy on that. I know they generally discuss this. So I, I think there's pieces that need additional work, but I think if we can get some form of general consensus with the joint meeting on, I think the design standards, not so much the uses, in my opinion. I think it's the standards themselves that, that may generate the most discussion. I think that the, the uses are things that have been talked about all along. So that's, that's my two cents. I mean, obviously, everybody can.
No, no, that's fine. So, so let's focus on the first question Lisa brought up. Are folks comfortable, that's two weeks from now, pulling together a meeting for November 10th with as many, ideally, all of the stakeholders as possible? See? All right?
Yeah, no, and I think it's really.
Yeah. No, and I think it's really important to get as advanced as we possibly can before we get hit with the holidays. You know, I think back to past years and past articles that, you know, we haven't even gotten as far as we have now on certain things and we're into January, February. And then, oh, we still have hearings to have and there really isn't enough time to educate the public on, on what's going on. So the sooner we can get a final document in place, the better. So I fully support moving forward with the meeting as early as possible and support November 10th.
And I think too, Brian, on that point, I think once, obviously, I think Planning Board is going to have the most to say. And so I think bringing us all together again, I honestly believe in looking at the document and I compared it to what's currently in the bylaw, and that's another point that I'll get to. I think there is great room for consensus here. And I think there may be just be, again, a few sticking points, again, whether it's Shopsy wanting a little bit more. Because it's kind of tough based on the maximum floor area that's allowed to .35 throughout the document. You know, if you have to have eight units to, to trigger affordable, you know, that, that's almost next to impossible. You know, when you look at some of the lots, which I've done downtown, you look at some of the lots downtown, the largest lot that's within the Business Villages District right now is 11 Main Street. And that specific lot is almost roughly 70,000 square feet. So at the .35 ratio, they would have like 24,500 buildable. And that's between all the floors. It's not just one floor. Well, they're currently at 22. So we're not really looking to expand. And a lot of the housing lots downtown, you know, roughly are, I looked at one that was 22,000, for instance. So, you know, you're looking at possibly maybe a 7,000 square foot building. And if you level that out, you know, between two and a half floors or even three, and this potentially allows for four. I think there's great ability to be able to do things. So just again, I think those are some of the comments and the things that we're really going to get into with Planning Board. But I think what's being presented is fairly reasonable in my mind and looking at what's, what's available downtown and what they're using for the Business Villages District currently.
Okay, Mark, two things. Number one, getting word out to, and obviously we should be expansive in terms of, of boards and committees, that there are some that are easy to identify as stakeholders. But let's be, I don't think there's a reason not to identify pretty much any board and committee as, as potentially a potential stakeholder and let them know that if they want to weigh in, then they're more than welcome to on November 10th. The second question is, how do we, what's the best mechanism? Or what are the best mechanisms for making sure that particularly the, you know, the, the primary stakeholders in terms of the folks in the downtown district and abutting the downtown district get notice of the fact that they have the opportunity to weigh in on this?
So two things. One, you know, I'll do the notice for boards and committees the way that we did this last time, which basically is to send it to all boards and committees. So I think there's about 173 people right there that are going to get notice of the meeting. So, so we'll get them covered. You know, we'll make sure that myself, Borough has it. We'll make sure that, you know, we put something up on our Twitter feed and something on the website. And then, you know, I don't want to speak for EDC, but, but likely EDC could do the outreach. And I see Lisa shaking her head, do the direct outreach to the businesses and the, and, you know, in the impacted area just to let them, you know, know and be aware of what's happening and their opportunity to participate.
Okay. Is that something? Go ahead, Lisa.
Sorry. And also I can add, it's through the hearing process as well. The public is also going to have an opportunity. But I agree that outreach and advance would certainly be a plus. But as Mark said also, Marty, that when Mark distributed this for us, he distributed it to everybody on his email list between committee members, committees and department heads as well. So everybody has to have feedback by the 6th. And I'm hoping that the shareholders meeting is just kind of sharing the feedback that we've gotten from everybody. And if anybody wants to add anything else.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense. Yeah, that will obviously streamline things. Okay. All right. Mark, I'm going to throw a lot of that into your lap then to make sure that that gets taken care. Do you want to, are you going to be in touch with EDC, Lisa? I assume the answer is yes. Yeah, okay. All right.
Also, one of the things that we thought was important, I know Julie, Claire and I had spoken about getting a redlined version, comparing the, the current bylaw to this subsection of the bylaw. So we're hoping, I know Claire was going to work on that. I'm hoping we're going to have something together before the joint meeting. So it kind of gives a bigger picture of what we're actually changing versus what we currently have. Because there was a lot of, a lot of things deleted, a lot, obviously a lot more uses added than is currently. So, and as we know from past town meetings even, people like to see the redlined versions and like to see what we're actually changing. So I'm just moving on with some of my extra points here. One discussion that was had by EDC, and again, it was just a talking point for me to actually bring back to this board as well, to see if there's any appetite for adding potentially additional parcels. I know they've recognized a few and we've talked a little bit about this and not publicly talking about parcels at this point until outreach is done to, obviously, the homeowners. I mean, the last thing you want to hear is the town's talking about rezoning. And again, I have a little concern of trying to stay on the timeline that we need with public hearings and everything. And it could potentially delay the process. I've shared some of these concerns with Julie and Claire as well. So, I mean, that's just something for us to keep in the back of our mind. If that's something we're interested in, are we complicating things too much? Because we all know sometimes, my fear would be to someone to stand up at town meeting and say, I didn't know or whatever, and you're talking about my property. And so I just want the board to consider that. I don't necessarily need an answer today, but just, just consider if the board would be interested in potentially adding additional parcels if the outreach could be done to the homeowners and they're aware to not blindside people. So I don't think we're talking a large number of parcels. I think they're talking specifically anywhere from four to six. But again, I'm not comfortable speaking about what those parcels are until a homeowner's been approached and know that the town is going to be discussing.
Yeah, I saw, I saw the discussion on that, Lisa, and I, and I think that's, that's the point. I mean, I think that if there's going to be, I don't want to say any resistance, but, but anything, any significant resistance certainly from folks whose parcels would be affected, then, then we don't bite off more than we can chew. And, and we go with the district as it currently exists. At least that's my view. But I think the idea of reaching out and seeing, because there could be benefits to having yourself. I mean, so that's the, you know, you can't, you can't just think that, you know, I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to come up with some improved zoning. And so it might be beneficial for some parcels to be included in that district that now has better zoning than it did before. So.
And it gives you an option too. If you go to sell your property, it may, you know, increase the value. Who knows? I mean,
Some flexibility, sure.
Some flexibility. One of the other things we talked about was just making sure of the age of the homes, whether there are some historic homes included in those six. We just want to make sure that we would consider potentially a, having to deal with a demolition bylaw, demolition delay bylaw. So that was another thing that they were going to check into. They were going to try to get the information, you know, before we move forward. But I just don't know what the taste of this board was. Seeing as we are on somewhat of a tight timeline, if we felt comfortable that we could potentially get this done. We can certainly explore it and see within the next two weeks what, you know, we could get done. And, and, you know, talk about it on the 10th. You know, obviously we want to be as transparent in this process as possible.
Yeah, Brian, Chelsea or Sam, thoughts? I'll start with you, Chelsea.
Yeah, I, I agree with that approach. Maybe just put some feelers out, but I wouldn't push it if it's going to create more, you know, an issue that would tie this up.
Sam, it looked like you wanted to weigh in.
A couple of comments. Yeah, Lisa has made some great points here. I think, as I look through, still working my way through. But I mean, the affordable housing piece is pretty weak still. And I think there are some ways that we could strengthen that. I think there are actually a number of what I would describe as technical drafting issues in here that things, simple things like the current thing is Business Villages District. And the bylaw draft refers to it as that sometimes, other times is Village Business District. So cleaning that kind of stuff up. We define microbrewery and then we don't list it as a permitted use here. And I wonder, for example, we still, it looks to me, Lisa, like we still have major site plan review triggered at the same places in the current bylaw. And I'm wondering if, if there is consideration of changing that threshold upward a little bit maybe to give some more flexibility to developers in the process. I don't know, but it seems like that's something that might be worth considering.
Sam, let me just stop you for a second and I've, I've got no problem with talking about any of this. But I'm just, I'm curious first, just to, just to get past this, whether or not you have an issue with at least exploring, expanding the district to some limited number of parcels?
No, no concern about that. I think it's worth exploring. And again, that conversation has gone on for a long time and I certainly understand the sensitivities of that. But we've got an opportunity to think more globally about this at this point and you don't get many chances. So I think we need to think pretty broadly and figure out pros and cons and see where that comes out.
Okay, Brian?
Yep. Support the approach has been discussed.
Okay.
So lastly, what I would just ask is, obviously, Sam, you've already taken two of the comments that I had. So I think it would be.
You took all my comments.
So I thought it would be easiest if we can discuss the comments tonight, everybody's comments. But if we could actually put them on paper and get them to Mr. Purple, it would be easier to create and put them on the comment sheet that Judy's requiring everything be done on versus trying to take notes, me trying to take notes tonight. I mean.
Could we get the word version of the thing? I don't know if I have that.
I can certainly get that.
Easier for me to do a red line and send it to Mark.
Well, Judy doesn't want a red line, Sam. She's very specific on.
I know she doesn't. I was going to send my red line to Mark and ask him to.
Let's, let's, let's go for you, let's go for uniformity. If, if the drafter wants comments a certain way, let's give the drafter the comments that way.
Please send me the word version anyway and I'll.
I will. I will. And I think the goal, Sam.
You can send it to me, Sam.
No, that's okay.
I think the goal was that, you know, there wasn't going to be a thousand comments. So based on that, you know, I will, the only other thing I wanted to touch on was, I was a little unclear and maybe people watching were unclear as well. I was, had a little confusion on the .35 and some of the references within the document. So we, Julie had, after our meeting, had discussed and asked Judy to put it in layman's terms. So if the board will oblige me, I would just like to read for anybody that may be paying attention tonight or future, just what that requirement is. So it's a tool for regulating the maximum floor area, building bulk that can be constructed on a lot, on a 10,000 square foot lot in a district with an FAR of .35. The maximum floor area of a building would be 3,500 square feet. That 3,500 square feet of floor area could be housed in one story, two stories or three. It just depends on the other dimensional requirements. So it's not specific to floor. You know, it's based on the footprint of the lot itself. So I don't know if that brought any clarity to anybody. It certainly did to me when she laid it out and looking at terms of what could potentially go on a lot, you know, in the district. So after that, I will open it up for any type of comments. I'll keep mine. Sam's already taken two of them. Thank you very much. Maybe I won't have any comments at the end. So I will leave it to you, Mr. Chairman, to open the door to feedback.
Or hold your powder to, to, you know, filling out the sheet and getting it in writing. But, which is my preferred approach. So Chelsea, do you have anything you want to weigh in tonight?
Yes. So Shopsy did, we did have a meeting last Thursday morning. And we did talk about the affordable piece in that. And I'll just reiterate what Lisa had already said is that it is a little short in terms of looking at affordable. I think in there it says the max units that you could have is eight. But you need eight in order to get one unit of affordable. So even if you get eight in a building, you're getting one affordable. So I think Shopsy was concerned. And I don't think Shopsy is looking for this to solve our affordable housing issue. But they were concerned that it really wasn't addressing maybe any affordable housing potentially. So I think we need to take a harder look at what the opportunity exists for affordable there. My other takeaway was, I was concerned about seeing that you could potentially get a four-story building approved through a special permit. I don't know if, I just don't know how that would look in that area. And I would be interested to hear from the abutters to see if that is a concern of them and maybe what Planning Board's view is. I mean, I'm not a zoning expert by any means, but that just struck me as maybe a little high for that area. And then the other comment that I had was the 3,000 per establishment. I think that seemed large to me if you're talking about a .35 ratio. That how could you really have 3,000 per establishment if you're talking about a .35 ratio for the entire building? So I just, I was curious as kind of how we got, came up with the 3,000 for the establishment. And I can put those in the document. Or do we want to have one person put it in the document so that we don't have duplicate comments?
No, I thought I volunteered, Mr. Purple.
Oh, did you? Okay. I'm sorry. So we're going to fill out the document and send it to Mr. Purple?
You can't, or you can put it in an email, Chelsea, again, unless, unless you're Sam and you're going to redline the document.
No, that's fine. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Brian?
No, no other comments.
Sam?
Not much. Just again, I think that there are a number of smaller pieces that sort of administratively we can fix, not a big problem. I think Lisa and Chelsea touched on some of the bigger issues, the policy issues that I'm still struggling a little bit with the math on this, as Lisa and Chelsea have mentioned. How do the sizes fit in that particular area? I'm not sure there's an easy solution. I'd be very interested in seeing how other towns deal with affordable housing in zones like this. There may be other standards that you can apply here to give developers more incentive and support to build affordable housing in smaller developments, if you will. I think maybe we did a little too much cutting and pasting from the old zoning code in some of the uses. For example, I don't think it makes a lot of sense to, even with a ZBA permit, to allow mobile homes in the downtown district, for example, even for 30 days kind of thing. Definitions I think are interesting. Other towns have some different language around things like bed and breakfast, which does things like limiting stay and requiring advanced reservations and so forth to narrow that one a little bit. Mixed use again is a place to look for other towns to weigh in a little bit. So those are the kind of things I'm still grinding my way through and I'll have comments. But again, I think it's a great start, major progress relative from one who spent five plus years on the ZAC a number of years ago and did not make it this far. I don't think it was my fault, but I'm not sure. There's something, I think it was.
But we'll, we'll decide that when we see your comments.
100% red line is, I think, great progress and I am optimistic that we'll actually get something across the finish line here. So great project. Thank you.
Yeah, I've got, I've got some nits, but, but I can put those in the, in the documents, Lisa. Could you just walk us and also anyone, you know, watching or if it's going to be reported, what is the, what's the thought for the timeline? In other words, the reason for, you know, pushing ahead for November 10th? What the, what the other dominoes that would fall after that?
Okay, bear with me one second.
Sorry, I didn't give you advanced.
20, 25,000 pieces of paper as I was going through all this. So the timeline that was presented in the original presentation, I'm just going to bear with me two seconds while I pull that up. Claire did a, a great job of doing that. And again, we're trying to stick to it as, as much as possible. I mean, for the grant opportunities, as long as, my understanding is, as long as the, the contractors are paid for as of 6:30, that the fund dries up. So we need to make sure at the very least that that's done. So the timeline.
Let me just weigh in on that. I just, I think, I think that the concern about that is really overstated. I mean, the, if, if, if. I mean, the, i- i- if, if, if the work, I don't even, that, they don't have to be paid. I mean, you know, I, 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 I deal with, with federal fiscal years all the time. And if the work is done within the fiscal year, then the money that's been allocated for that fiscal year can be used to pay it. So the, you know, and, and, and clearly unless something bizarre happens, the work is going to be done within this fiscal year. So the idea that, that somehow payment has to be generated or if something is lagging, I, again, I, I would put that aside. It's, it really isn't. It, it shouldn't be a concern.
No, I, I agree, Marty. And we had talked about this. I mean, if you're looking on a timeline for a Springtown meeting, it, you're gonna be well done and everything documented before then anyway. So the timeline that was initially presented, and again, there, there, there has to be a little fluctuation in this because, you know, I think we're at a great point now. So originally it was November 17th to have a final draft article reviewed and reviewed and approved at a Board of Selectmen's meeting. Depending on how the comments go, I, I, I think the 17th is a little enthusiastic. But I think we're probably, me personally, I think we're probably within a couple of weeks of that. I think, I think we're close. I think the draft that we've been given, and again, I can't speak for Planning Board, um, I think it's a great starting point. And I think the joint meeting will help move that along. Um, so November 19th, Planning Board would need to receive the finalized draft. The first public hearing would be December 14th, the second and third would be in January. The public hearings would continue if need be until February. And then in February, uh, the, the BOS votes changes if necessary from the public hearings. And then it would be online for the March town meeting. So, um, I mean, that, that's currently where we're at, but again, I don't necessarily know that a March town meeting is gonna take place. And I, I do think it's more important to get the right document than, um, and try to stick to the timeline as much as we can. But I think getting the right document and getting something that approved town meeting is key.
Yeah, the timeline is aggressive. I will say that. So.
We're doing good though.
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree. We're farther along on, on October 27th than, than I would have imagined. So that's terrific.
Yeah. And everybody's working together. You know, Planning Board was very receptive to, to putting it on the agenda. I had thrown out initially a March 10th, uh, I'm sorry, um, November 10th date. I said, you know, obviously the board hasn't discussed that, but I wanted people to keep that, that, that date in their minds. So now that we have it, you know, I'll share that with Planning Board as well. So.
And Lisa, you and Sam, I mean, I saw, uh, uh, again, I got, had the opportunity to see Sam diss me at the end of the, uh, the, the Planning Board, the Master Plan meeting last night. But I did watch substantively a decent amount of that. Um, I'm assuming, Mark, when you send out notice, it goes to the Master Plan Committee as well.
Yeah. So, well, and just to clarify, um, so we're not really characterizing this as a joint meeting, correct? I mean, I, you know, you know, your intention is not to have all, you know, like three, four, five boards posting, um, to meet with us. This is an open meeting for all participants, all interested stakeholders to come and, and participate, correct?
Right. Although we said that last time and a bunch of people did joint meetings. So, so put it in bold this time.
But doesn't it, doesn't it count though, from an open meetings law standpoint, if, if, let's say, all of the, uh, you know, Planning Board shows up? Even though they may not, you know, officially open a meeting or whatever, if they're all there in common in any substantive way. Seems to me that creates a potential issue.
You know, it, again. It, it shouldn't, and I, I don't think that it does, but, but, but people do worry about that.
I think at the very least, Planning Board and, and EDC as well, obviously as us, should, should be posting a meeting, I think, at, at the very least. Three, because I think, not that anybody's input is, is as important, Sam, but I think having Planning Board support this is key.
You know, and I'll do another dive into the open meetings law. I, I mean, again, if, if, if a board isn't taking action, if they are not deliberating. If, if individual members of a board are weighing in, that, that, that shouldn't, and I don't think it does constitute a meeting of that board. But I'll, I'll dive into the open meetings law again and, and re-educate myself.
Awesome. So if we could get, uh, any comments to Mr. Purple by Friday, that would be wonderful. And Sam, I will get you the red line, the, um, red line. You've got it in my brain. I, I'll get you the word document.
Just make sure there's a, there's a virus in it, uh, Lisa, so he's not able to edit.
Absolutely.
But anyway, the other reason I brought up Master Plan is because the, um, um, you guys covered a ton of territory in your meeting. Was it last night? I, I watched it. I know I watched it today.
Last week.
Okay. But it seemed like the zoning and downtown discussion, to the extent it happened at your meeting, was in sync with what we're trying to do with this bylaw.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So that's encouraging as well. So folks who are to spend a lot of time looking at a, at, at even longer term than, than a specific zoning article are looking at it the same way we are. So that, again, that's a real plus as well.
And, and Marty, that committee actually has representatives from, I don't, I can't remember exactly how many, but 10 or 12 other committees in town. So they are theoretically at least plugged in through their representatives to that discussion. So this whole, uh, downtown district thing should not come as a surprise to much of anyone in terms of committees in town.
Good point. Okay. All right, Lisa, have we done everything you need to on, on the downtown initiative tonight?
I think so. I think so. I think we're moving on the right path. So thank you very much on that.
Excellent. And again, thank you for, for, um, doing some real heavy lifting on this. And, and to the, to, you're right. I, I mean, I, I've, I've, um, um, seen a little bit with Julie Connolly and, and Claire. And, and, uh, obviously the Planning Board has been very helpful and receptive as well. So, uh, collaboration is nice. All right. Next item. See, I don't have my printer down here in New Jersey, so I actually have to. I don't, I don't, I can't just go. So we are on consent agenda. The hundred dollar donation for the fire department ambulance fund, I move that we accept that donation.
Second.
Discussion, none? Mrs. Brusio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shay?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. That's unanimous as well. The assistance, the rent and mortgage assistance program approval.
Okay, that's me again.
Yep.
So, um, I'm not gonna actually ask for the approval tonight. Just, just a general update. And again, I'm gonna ask, uh, a want of the board. So, um, I've been giving general updates, uh, obviously to the board on the rent and mortgage program and how other towns are utilizing the CARES Act funds. And some of the initial process that was considered. Um, I wanted to thank the Emergency Fund Committee, Youth and Family Services, Carla McCullough, Brian Ballantyne, Lori Esposito, and, uh, Mr. Purple, again, for working so collaboratively with us. With Chelsea and I, and working so quickly to put a process in place to be able to help some of our residents that have a need. As we go through the process with you and the application, the only action I'm requesting tonight is that we have a brief. When I say brief, I mean, hopefully, uh, all questions and everything can be answered on process tonight. A brief meeting either, uh, Thursday or Friday, whether it be a joint meeting with the BOS and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to accomplish two things. One, for the Affordable Housing Trust to agree to be a backup funding source if the CARES Act does not reimburse, which is allowed. Through the CPC, uh, and that's where the funds came from. As well as to have the Affordable Housing Trust, um, appoint Ms. Malinowski to be an extra check and balance on this program for reviewing the redacted applications before it goes to the town accountant. The last thing we'd wanna do is to overwhelm Carla with all of these applications. So it's just another, another process, but I think, um, for clarity, because as a backup funding source potentially, if the Affordable Housing Trust agrees with that, and not that we expect that, um, I think it's a good backup for us as well as members of the Affordable Housing Trust to have a point person making sure the applications are complete. So it does get reimbursed through CARES and we don't run into an issue. So that's point one. And then from the Board of Selectmen's side, we would just require final approval of the program and application we're gonna talk about tonight. And why I'm not asking for it to be, um, done tonight is Town Council's currently reviewing it. He is going to have his comments and everything sign off for us tomorrow. So I don't want to, again, approve something tonight that we may need to make a change for. So, um, the application language, just to be clear, the application and guideline language was taken from Ashland and Holliston. So I, I can't imagine there's gonna be too many issues with the language on his part. So I would request a very brief, uh, like if the board is available at eight o'clock, I would say Affordable Housing Trust at eight o'clock and the Board of Selectmen at eight 10. If we can answer, and again, we wanna, I wanna go through the process with you, um, how this is going to work to hopefully answer all the questions you have. And also talk about what you have in front of you. There's a few minor changes. It'll take like literally a minute to go through changes from the document you have in front of you. So those are our asks for you tonight. I don't know, Marty, if you, what process you wanna go through. If you wanna wait till the end to see if you feel that we're in a place to have a quick meeting and, and the board may disagree and that's fine. We're just trying to move this along. We had started with, um, based on the narrow window we have for being able to, um, distribute the funds. We had put initially an 11 1 date as the start date for taking applications. And again, if that needs to change, that's fine, but we wanna try to keep as close to that as we possibly can. And I, I don't see any other way, um, in doing that. So if you prefer, Marty, we can, gonna go through the processes that we've put in place, that we've worked with everybody on. Then we can take a look at the applications and answer any questions you have on that or the process. And if everybody's comfortable, then we can move to step two and see if everybody would be amenable to having a very brief and quick joint meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I, I suspect that the answer to question two is going to be yes, but let's hold it until after we do question one and walk through this. Makes sense?
Okay. So, so, um, I think first, if everyone has at least the, the, the only changes that were made were made to the guidelines. And, um, one of the things we added where it says up to two months rental and mortgage assistance, we added subject to available funding. We didn't want it to be open ended because again, we don't know what the, um, the, uh, app, you know, how many applications we're gonna receive. The only other things that were updated was, um, we took Sarah Cassell's name off as the point person for, um, Youth and Family. So now it's going to go to a Youth and Family general, uh, mailbox that anyone within Youth and Family can see. And we can start the process there. And Sarah will only be called, uh, we added her number and extension for extenuating circumstances. Throughout the document, again, we changed that. And the only other thing we did is we added at the very end of the document, to drop off the completed application, please make an appointment by contacting Southborough Youth and Family Services at SYFS@southboroughma.com or drop off in the secure mailbox attached to the front of the building at 21 High Street, South Row. Those were the only changes we made to the guidelines. The application has stayed the same from what you currently have in front of you. So let me talk process and then we can, and Chelsea, you can jump in if I miss something, please. We'll, we'll talk process quickly and then we'll go back to the application and any questions that you may have. So, um, once we get the word out on this and, um, oh, the only other, other change we added is library. To be able to use the library as a distribution list as well. Uh, they've agreed to do that. So once somebody gets the application and goes through the checklist and, and feels that they have everything there, it's going to be reviewed by the, uh, Southborough Emergency Fund. They already have steps in place for the programs that they have. Nothing we're asking for here is something out of the norm that they're currently processing. Once they go through it and it meets all the qualifications and they have all of the required documentation, it will then be redacted and forwarded to Chelsea, obviously for confidentiality purposes. It will go to Chelsea and she'll once again make sure that every I is dotted and every T is crossed. Uh, once it goes through that process, it will go to Carla. And at that point, it should be relatively seamless for her. We're looking at a potential turnaround here, um, of between, we figure a day to two days for Youth and Family. And I think Carla agreed that she could possibly do this in, in one to two days as well. So we could have a relatively quick turnaround on this. And again, as I said, you know, just as a comfort level, that in case something happened with CARES, I mean, it, it is a government program. Unless something happens with CARES, that's why we wanted the Affordable Housing Trust as a backup and other towns are doing that as well. So we know it is allowed. Other towns are actually matching, uh, the CARES Act with CPC money from the Affordable Housing Trust because it falls within the guidelines. So Chelsea, do you wanna, did I miss anything?
So the only thing that I would add is, um, we're, we're allocating a certain amount of funds. For this, so we're looking at doing $25,000. Um, we don't really know what the need will be. But that's why we set the dates for this to be 11 1 to 12 1. So that, so we worked with Carla because she has to get all of her backup for reimbursement in by 12 30 of this year because that's when CARES ends. So we wanted to make sure she had enough leeway to get all the backup that she needed to submit for reimbursement. So we'll have to front the money, um, out of the general fund. And then Carla will do her thing with how she transfers it into the CARES, um, tracking bucket. The other thing is, Selper was allocated $900,000 for CARES. And I think, Mark, you can keep me honest here, um, we haven't, we're not even applying for 150 yet. So there, there, so the 25 is a very conservative number. And we've, that's kind of what we felt comfortable with, with doing. So I think that's all.
So again, I just wanna say it was, it was an extremely quick and collaborative effort on everybody's behalf. I mean, everybody was on board with trying to put something in place because we have such a narrow window to do this. So with that being said, um, open up questions for comments on the, the guidelines, the application and/or the process.
I just have one, one, again, it's interesting. I, I wondered where the, um, where the language came from. And it's, it's, uh, so it's, it's been vetted somewhere before. I thought it was well done. Do we have to authorize, in other words, the, an application is made and if, is, do we have to authorize someone to be able to say, yes, you meet the criteria? It's unclear to me who's making that determination. In other words, who's making the determination that the criteria are met?
So once the application comes into Youth and Family, or I should say the Emergency Fund, which is made up of Pam from the Senior Center, Cindy from the Senior Center, um, Sarah Cassell and Barbara Jandrew from the Food Pantry.
Yep.
Once it comes in and all of the boxes are checked, uh, the, it's the Emergency Fund can relatively come together quickly and approve the application to move forward to Chelsea for the extra checks and balances. And they do this now with the, the current Emergency Fund that we have through the Southborough, um, Community Fund. Allocates X number of dollars every year that is deemed to be used for, you know, a, a citizen in trouble, whether it may be with a, a utility bill or a medical bill or, so they, they have the criteria and the steps in place. This is just another program for them to be able to, um, approve and make sure that it meets the guidelines.
Okay, so that, because what you've just described isn't in here.
Okay.
I, 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 I don't, I, unless I'm missing, I don't, in other words, it's not laid out in here. Um, and I don't think it needs to be, but I'm just wondering if we need to, um, in addition to approving this, take either as part of that or as an additional vote and we authorize that the, the, um, you know, the approval and processing, um, process follows the same, uh, guidelines as, I mean, just it, so that it's clear what, where the accountability lies. That's all.
Would you be more comfortable, Marty, if we just did a one page sheet that we can add to this just for the board to have on Friday? That just spelled it out and we can approve that.
I think that'd be helpful. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Again.
Absolutely. I think between Chelsea and I, that'll be relatively easy to, to take care of.
Okay. Yeah, no, the explanation was perfect. It's just I'm going, wait a minute, did I not, I, I don't think I saw that in here. Yeah, it's a perfectly reasonable explanation. Um, I just think having it in writing would be, you know, would be a final dotting of an I and crossing of a T.
Relatively simple to do.
Okay, that's all for me. Uh, and Chelsea and Lisa already, Sam?
A couple of things, a great program and, um, I think that the process you described, Lisa, is a good one. I think that, uh, I could continue to wonder if 25,000 is enough. Should we be thinking about more, but we can, I guess, deal with that later. I, I have some nitpicky comments on the, uh, application materials. It looks like it suffers a little bit from some cutting and pasting here. I think, for example, it refers to both the housing program and the rental, rental assistance program. It refers in one place to people over 18 and another places to 18 and older. I think those need to be made consistent. I think several of the lists of things in here don't really have a similar structure in terms of language. So I, I think that it would be helpful to make those, those lists consistent. And, um, again, some other wordsmithing in there. I, I, I would suggest a little redlining on that one, Lisa. If you'd send me the original version, I would be happy to do that. And then you guys. If you'd send me the original version, I would be happy to do that, uh, and then you guys could take or ignore whatever you want on that. Um, I think it's worth having one that actually reads well consistently throughout, uh, not that this doesn't get the job done, but it's worth taking a little extra care, I think.
Okay, well, this one, Sam, just so you know, this this was fairly consistent with Ashland. We found that was the application that was best matched to us. So no, I I'd be happy to send you for for red lines.
The word version.
If if you could do that relatively quickly, because Council's giving us his opinion on what we've already given him.
I promise to do it quickly, and, uh, again, I I don't necessarily hold Ashland as as the goal standard for, uh, wordsmithing, but we'll see.
I'll tell my friends in Ashland that.
Yeah, I have a few left, too.
And that's.
No big issues, but I think, again, we all make it look as as, you know, clean and consistent as we can. But good program and a great job to get this moving quickly here because there's a real need for it.
Um, okay. Mr. Shay.
Uh, great work on this. No additional comments and no word version for me, please.
I I think I could probably do enough redlining for all of us. Thank you.
No, Sam.
And by the way, Sam, I looked at that eighteen year, they, I think it's pretty consistent. They say eighteen years of age or older or under eighteen.
Uh, some of it says nineteen and older, I thought. Anyway.
Well, anyway, we'll we'll look at the red line.
Um, I just responded to one of Sam's comments about twenty five thousand. So we did talk a decent amount about whether that was the right number, not the right number. Um, and that was another reason for the deadline to be twelve one, so that we can see kind of what the need is and if we need to, um, reassess.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Okay, so that being said, um, Sam, I will get you the word document tonight. Um, we should hear something from Aldo as far as final sign off, uh, tomorrow night, I would say, Sam. Like Sam said, it's it's, I don't think it's any major changes, just a little wording here and there. So I would ask, based on everyone's availability, um, for a brief, again, Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I I think, again, we need to take that vote. Um, we can't just authorize a funding source, and I think that's got to come from the Affordable Housing Trust. So just a a brief, quick vote, um, maybe a quick, um, in in advance of that meeting, we'll get to the other two members outside of the Board of Selectmen, Bill Boland and Dorian Jazinski. We'll get them copies of this. So they're they're well aware of what's going on. Um, you can have a conversation with one of them offline.
Lisa, I'm fine. I'm fine doing doing that, and I I could do it, you know, Friday morning. But could we, I'm just wondering, what exactly is the vote you would want from us? I'm just wondering if we could make the vote tonight and make a contingent on action by.
Town Council's review. If you made the vote contingent upon, you know, you approved the forms, um, you know, a contingent upon Town Council's review.
Okay.
Did you watch the one pager, though, with the process before you took a vote?
I'm fine with, I am, I am fine with your representation that the process you laid out is the process that's going to be put in print. I'm I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. So I guess then then the only question would be the Affordable Housing Trust.
Right.
Uh, because we'd have to meet as Affordable Housing Trust to take to take a position.
I mean, if you think they would be, that, you know, they'd feel more comfortable somehow if we were there, but I I, in a weird way, I think they might feel more comfortable if they know that we've already signed off on it.
Well, we're the Affordable Housing Trust, all five of us, plus, we are them. Yeah, that's the issue. Oh, that was why I was trying to do it, figuring out if we could do a joint. It's it's all five of, sorry, Sam, go ahead.
Because Affordable Housing Trust on the town website still has Mr. Kalenda and not Mrs. Malinowski on there, so.
We'll get that fixed before Friday. But yeah, so it again, just a quick, we have a vote of five already. So, um, you know, we'll just make sure the other two members, um, Mr. Jazinski and and Mr. Boland. And and if if, you know, neither of them are available, then I I think we still have the form that we need in in order to move forward. But I would imagine, I can't imagine there being an issue.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let me see if this, Lisa, you tell me if this satisfies what you what you want to accomplish. Um, I move that the Board of Selectmen and now I'm I'm just trying to think how we can because you want the other, you want two approvals.
Not on the application, though, not on the application. We only need approval from the Affordable Housing Trust to use it as a backup source. So they're not approving this application or the guidelines or anything. Um, it it it's, yes, Mark, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, no, I I was just going to say, you know, so if if Chairman does what he's attempting to do tonight for at least the Selectmen's vote, you already said you're going to meet again on, um, you're meeting on the fourth. Is, do you really need the supplemental backup approval before you roll this program out? Or can you simply have the Affordable Housing Trust Fund meet ten minutes before the Selectmen's meeting on the fourth and provide that security?
Process wise, um, we we could do it on the fourth, but I I I I don't think that piece is going to hold up any part of this. I mean, obviously, the application and the guidelines are are the key point. If we can, if we can do that, um.
Lisa, you seem uncomfortable. Let me ask this. Are folks available at eight o'clock on Friday morning for ten minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, and and the other thing, too, I'm not sure about eight o'clock because we've got to have forty eight hours notice, and the clerk's got to get this posted. So, uh, you know, we've got to, I've got to prepare the agendas really quick, get them to the clerk, get them posted. So it could be more, you know, eight thirty, um, or some more.
I I anticipate literally a three-minute meeting. I I can't imagine.
Do you want to do it at noon? I mean, noon on Friday?
Do it whenever you want.
I mean, it's, you know, it's in this virtual world. It's just, it's 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 different. I I mean, I could do it. I could do it at noon on Friday.
That's fine. I just, I was trying to be cognizant of other people's schedules, so, um, Mr. Shay, does that work for you?
Noon on Friday works, yes.
Okay, Sam?
I could make that work, yeah.
Okay, and again.
Which which do you want first? Which meeting do you want first?
We're only going to do one because Marty's going to take a a motion for the Board of Selectmen's side on the guidelines.
Trust, okay.
Just Affordable Housing Trust. Yep, that's it.
Okay.
All right, so.
It's two agenda items for the trust. It's the twenty five thousand for the backup and then the, um.
Authorizing.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, Chelsea, go ahead.
No, that's okay. Authorizing the, um, myself to do the application review.
Yeah, yeah.
And also put on approval of the minutes of that meeting. We don't need to, again, to, uh, review those minutes.
Yes, we can do that. We did that the last time, so.
All right, Lisa, if I miss something on this motion, you will fill it in before the motion is completed. But I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the rental mortgage assistance guidelines as proposed, the mortgage rent assistance application as proposed, and the criteria review and a and approval process as proposed. Does that get everything?
I think so.
That's my motion.
No.
Second.
That was that pending Council?
Pending Council, yes.
Uh, pending pending review and approval by Town Council.
Second.
All right, discussion, none. Ms. Brascio.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
Mr. Shay.
Aye.
And Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye as well. It's unanimous.
Thank you very much, everybody.
All right, great job on this.
Moving so quickly to get this done, so it would be, it's appreciated.
All right, the last thing is, and I realize that that that, um, I I jumped over item two, um, which, of course, I insisted be part of our agenda every time, which is the initial public comment, and then immediately. So anyway, I don't.
Already, you've managed to scare off all the public now.
There's no one there.
No more attendees.
There's no more attendees.
Your subversion plan has succeeded.
So I apologize if there was someone here at six thirty who wished to make public comment, um, although I did not see any hands up, uh, at any point. So, um, there being no public, there can be no public comment. Um, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, seconded by Mr. Shay, I think, somebody. All right, no discussion. Ms. Brascio.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
Mr. Shay.
Aye.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye. Um, nice job, everybody. Have a good evenings.
Thank you, everybody.
All right.